Greatest financial investment and one that we would not want to hurt. And let us not make that mistake. The journey ahead will not be easy, but it's time to move on. Please vote yes on this article.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Steve Morash, Precinct Two. I apologize for the raised voice a little bit, Mr. Moderator, but it's the frustrations of listening to arguments that I think we've all heard. And the hour is late. And I'm really am torn right now whether to continue this debate tonight and ask for a vote, which I think would carry, or do I ask you to go along with your adjournment and to come back tomorrow, just letting the people that are in line now and myself come back tomorrow and vote this tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon as quick as possible, tomorrow evening? We all know this debate, we've all listened to it. We know what's going to happen on this side of the table. Anybody doesn't know what's going to happen on this side of the table? We know the issues on this one. I thought we were ready to vote this last night. I was ready to come in here tonight at 7:30, listen to an hour of debate, and be home by nine o'clock. That obviously didn't happen. So I would go with the will of this body. I've had people tell me that they had commitments for two nights, they were here, and they may not be able to meet and vote tomorrow. I would, uh, I'm really torn. So I would put it to your good judgment. Or your good judgment. Or the good judgment we all had, now that Chris Ting is in here tonight.
Mr. Morash, I'll just restate again that it's not a decision for the moderator, it's a decision for town meeting. And after you've... Is, uh, what does town meeting sense? There are some speakers, and I, as I indicated, I will let the speakers standing speak. What does town meeting sense? Would you prefer to proceed to a conclusion tonight on this article, or would you prefer There's also a speaker speaking at the conclusion of the speaker's...
I think I heard enough people, Mr. Moderator, telling me we want to continue tonight. So I will continue.
You have the floor, Mr. Morash. Continue.
Thank you very much, sir. Citizens, we cannot escape history. None of us can. We will be remembered in spite of ourselves. No personal significance or insignificance will spare us, one another, from the fiery trial which we now pass. The lightest honor or dishonor to the latest generation, we hold the power and the responsibility right here in this room. The words of Lincoln never were truer than tonight. We're faced with one of the biggest threats to our town, the conditions of our schools. We need to fix them, all of them. We need to fix them now, soon. Some say, and I've heard tonight, it just costs too much money. Well, that's the price that must be paid for a long-listed decisions that got us here tonight. Whether it's Prop Two and a Half, deferred maintenance, increased public school enrollment, unfair state reform, no commercial tax base, or all of the above. Well, this is not the time or the place to fix blame. We can do all that later. You have your guilty parties, I have mine. It really doesn't matter tonight. We're here in this place with this problem, this threat to our town, to our schools, and to our future. A committee of town meeting has been meeting for over a year and a half on this issue. They have put together the plan that they want us to make a decision to send it to the voters for their approval. To those who complain there is no menu to choose from, I'd say the committee looked into everything, and they came back with a plan that does the most of all, and it cost effectively does it for the town. This plan has been reviewed and approved by all the appropriate town committees and boards along the way to town meeting here tonight. We know the people on these committees. They're our neighbors. They're just like us. And we trust them to work in good faith for us and the town, just like they would expect us to work in good faith for them if the roles were reversed. And I know they have. They all approved it with only one negative vote. Now it's our turn. But now we hear from the few who would want it both ways. There are those who say, and they ask me to delay the project, delay will only cost more. There are those who ask me to ignore the facts, ignorance will cost us more. There are those who say it was good enough for me, it's good enough for them. Lack of vision and understanding will cost us our future. If you don't believe the work of the committee and their plan, I ask you all to go to school. To those who don't believe the schools are crowded, let them go to the Pierce Middle School. To those who don't believe that the teaching space is crowded, let them go to Tucker. To those who say we can just add trailers and quads at huts to the schools, let them go to the Glover. To those who say the buildings are safe in some, go to the Carlicott and do that bounce test we heard about Mr. Anderson doing. To those who say the educational spaces are adequate, come to Milton High. To those who say we treat our children with respect and dignity, let them go to the special ed programs at Cunningham and at Tucker School. This plan, this comprehensive plan, addresses the clear and present danger to our town. And its proposed solution, we are surely taking a turn, if we choose to ignore that problem, and its proposed solution tonight, we are surely taking a turn to the road to self-destruction. If we want to believe that someone can or should save us with more state aid, or more federal aid, or some private benefactor, we're all kidding ourselves. This is our problem. And while we might not have been here at its creation, we can surely all be here for the beginning of its solution. We can come together as a community and take action, and help all of our citizens in the best possible manner. Listen to the recommendations of the towns committees. We will pay thirty-five to forty-five million dollars to fix our schools. How will we do it? Will we choose the path that gives us a vision of new buildings with new teaching spaces and all-new furniture and equipment that are not crowded and have a long-range plan for the future? Or will we choose to buy new boilers and new roofs and patches to fix cracks in crumbling, obsolete buildings? Will we choose to have safe, state-of-the-art, modern schools that we can be proud of to send our students to? Or will we choose to continue to hide behind grandfather clauses and send our town's children to potential firetraps to meet the fire codes of the Coconut Grove era? Will we choose to have new schools with adequate community space and more recreation area? Or will we say no because we just didn't go one basketball court far enough? Will we choose to stand up and face the problems squarely and move into the 21st century with a fiscally prudent plan? Or will we choose the half-a-loaf approach that will only cost us more money? To me, the choice is clear. The answer is very simple. The answer is yes. The answer is now. We must do it. And those of you who still may have some doubts, I ask that you vote yes to bring this to the townspeople in Milton to vote on. The problem is town-wide. The solution is town-wide. There's no doubt the decision must be town-wide. I urge you to vote yes on this article as quickly as possible tonight. Thank you.
Are there two speakers remaining standing? Mr. Mullen, you made a motion earlier. At the moderator's request, you withdraw the motion, and I would entertain it after the two speakers speak. Thank you. After the two speakers have spoken, I have one brief procedural issue and then matter, and then I will entertain Mr. Mullen's motion to adjourn, which is a priority motion. Ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Heffernan Connolly. I'm a precinct member from, I am a town meeting member from Precinct Three, and I'm also an elected assessor. And I'm moved to speak tonight by way of an advertisement to those and on behalf of those elderly citizens who have been referred to here as those least able to bear the burden. There are programs in place in this town and in every town and city in the Commonwealth for persons of age and certain income limitations to receive exemptions on their property taxes. There are also hardship exemptions over which the Board of Assessors has great discretion for people who are having great difficulty paying their property taxes on top of everything else. There is also a tax deferral program for persons sixty-five and older, and this allows people within a certain income bracket to defer payment on their taxes until their house is sold. This is the month for people to apply for abatements on their houses. And there are statutory deadlines for this, and there are people in Town Hall, in the assessor's office, it's on the first floor of Town Hall, you're welcome to go there during town hours. You can call 696-5703. They will send you applications. I will help you. I will speak to any group who feels that they are lacking in information about this and whose members feel they should be eligible. My phone number is on the town meeting member list, or you can get it by calling the assessor's office. These are real programs with real dollars and real exemptions and real abatements for real people. And I, to tell you the truth, I think they're underused, judging from the numbers. We really do not have a lot of tax deferrals, and we do not have a lot of hardship exemptions, which leads one to believe, in my seat, that there aren't a lot of people who are having trouble paying taxes. If they're out there and they're not being served, they should go to the assessor's office and get information. And again, I'm glad to speak to any group. Thank you.
I'm Carol Looney, Precinct One, and I've been a Milton taxpayer for more than a quarter of a century. My children attended Tucker School in the seventies and received an excellent education. I'm glad to see that that still continues. And Mr. DeSoto, is my senior name? Soto, sorry, is a good example of the fine quality of recent grads of the Milton Public Schools, Tucker and Milton High School. Public speaking skills are excellent. I wish mine were as good. I attended one of the Friends of the Milton School open houses and received some literature in which Mr. DeWolfe was quoted as saying that Milton property value would rise about thirty to thirty-five percent, adding over ninety thousand dollars to the value of the average home. Well, I did some math, and not that math is my big skill, but at fifteen dollars per thousand assessed value, before Proposition Two and a Half overrides, the real estate tax cost would be an additional thirteen hundred fifty dollars. Now, if you just reduce that to eight dollars as the assessment goes up and the rate goes down, it's still another increase of at least seven hundred twenty dollars. If you, well, with possible future overrides, I was just wondering where this all would end. And I noticed that the MWRA has promised to increase our rates as well through the time. So when the peak year of 2006 comes, I will have started my so-called golden years, and then I will be eligible for this help. I understand that I can work off five hundred dollars of my value by doing some sort of community service. No, I'm sorry, I guess I'm an error. I thought I had read that somewhere. The deferral, I'd have to die first to benefit from that myself, I think. So I do say that I am concerned about all the, these monies that are going to be expended in the near future that I feel that I myself cannot afford.
Before I do, there's a brief procedural matters. Mr. Kayla's still here. Mr. Kayla, were you rising on a point of personal privilege earlier? Would you state your personal privilege briefly, please? Come to the mic. A while ago, you sought to be recognized, and I did not recognize you, but it occurred to me after that that you may have been stating a point of personal privilege. You rose to speak after remarks by town meeting member Patricia Schneider. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is it, uh...
It's very late at night, and we have about five more people I know are going to speak, probably more. And I would join Mr. Mullen in making a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mullen, was your motion to adjourn until tomorrow night at 7:30? Is that motion seconded? That motion is debatable. Does anyone wish to be heard on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, Peter Mullen, Precinct Three. To the people in the hall who support Article Four, I'd seriously suggest that it's in the interest of passing this town-wide that we adjourn now and we vote on this tomorrow night. Tonight, the vote in town meeting is only the first step in this process. We need to pass this with the voters of this town. We're giving people an excuse to vote no if they can say that it was, that the article passed town meeting at 11:45 or midnight and that most of their supporters weren't The vote in town-wide may well be close. I suggest that we adjourn, we come back tomorrow night, we vote this thing, and we eliminate an issue that may be a problem down the road. Thank you.
Recognized.
Marjorie Jeffries, Precinct Five. Is it not true that we will have to come back tomorrow night anyway for the rest of the articles?
Yes, there, yes, the answer is yes. Does anyone else wish to be heard on the motion to adjourn? If you're in favor of adjourning to tomorrow night, you vote yes. If you are opposed to adjourning tomorrow night, vote no. All those in favor of adjourning till tomorrow night at 7:30, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by saying no.
No.
The motion carries. Town meeting is adjourned till tomorrow at 7:30. Thank you. Town meeting members, we have a quorum. Could you take his seat so we may begin, please?
What do you say? We adjourn?
That's Virginia King. She said she had an amendment she's going to get up on. So I don't think that, but I have one too, as you know.
For town meeting, please come to order. We have a quorum, and we're ready to begin. Before we begin, I'd like to review a couple of preliminary ground rules. Just a reminder, this is a very sensitive subject. Obviously, there has been some lengthy debate. Please respect the speakers who are speaking while you're sitting, and please respect the civility of the process. If you wish to talk, please go outside. Do not talk in the back of the room. If you go outside the room and wish to talk, please do not talk near the doors to the auditorium. That has a tendency to come back in, and it interferes with those speakers who choose to sit up back. Second, town meeting members only sit in front of, that is, on this side of the markers there, the white markers. That is especially important when it comes to a vote on any article. Only those town meeting members who are sitting on the forward section, that is, between the stage and the white markers, will be counted. If you are sitting back behind that, even if you're a town meeting member, your vote will not be counted. With the exception of priority motions, such as motions to adjourn, et cetera, all motions should be in writing and submitted to the moderator, or they will not be entertained by the moderator and allowed to be presented to town meeting. I have a couple of speakers I will recognize as part of the debate. We are still on the subject matter of Article Four. Two resident non-town meeting members obtained permission today to speak to the Assembly. They are Nina Graves and Cynthia Clark. After that, I will recognize Mr. Neely, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to answer some of the questions that were presented yesterday that were properly within the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. After that, I will recognize Mr. Winchester, the chairman of the School Building Committee, because likewise, some questions were presented yesterday that were unable to be answered due to the lateness of the hour. At that point, we will proceed with the debate, and I will recognize any speakers as is the normal, an ordinary custom. Nina Graves, you are recognized.
I heard all the talks yesterday and the day before, and I asked if I could talk today, very shortly. I visited my friends Christmas time out of state in a beautiful, large brick home with a beautiful yard, and the wife said her taxes were going up twenty dollars. So I boldly asked, how much were her taxes? Eight hundred dollars. Wow. In seven years, my husband and I have paid more than forty to fifty thousand dollars in taxes than this couple, who is just like us, the same age and no children. They have bought two new Buicks. I bought this year a two thousand dollar, nineteen seventy-eight Olds. Now you want me to pay more taxes. I first substituted in the Milton Schools in nineteen sixty-eight. I've lived here forty years. I was so impressed with the quality of teaching that in nineteen seventy-four, my two children I changed from the academy to the Milton High School. A third child stayed here all twelve years in the system. I went to all the meetings parents usually go to. So I want to tell you a little bit about the history as I saw it. Thirty years ago, Milton was considering a new elementary school at a cost of one million dollars on fifty acres of land on Hillside Street. I think we still own that land. I wished that we had built it for a million dollars, but we didn't. About forty years ago, I heard the architect of the Pierce Junior High School say how hard he personally had tried to convince Milton to build a new high school there instead of the junior high school. But thank Dr. Giuliana, he did save the Cunningham Junior High School, and we or he really did something right. So from all the meetings I've gone to and observed, including the school meeting, I think, what does Milton need in the year 2000 and in the future? The price of gasoline will rise. Vouchers might come in. How can Milton be more ahead in our thinking? What do we need now? I have three things. Milton needs, yesterday, a new elementary school. Maybe to be built, maybe on the Hillside property or near the Colton Farm. Number two, we need to again make the Cunningham a second high school, a second junior high school, and use the whole third floor, which cannot be now used for an elementary school. They say we need space. That is certainly space if we can use it. We need to have the Pierce Elementary School again, as well as the Pierce Junior High. And why? If you think, if the thinking now is smaller is better education, and they also think that an elementary school attached to a middle school is good. Thank you.
Cynthia Clark, you're recognized.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Clark. I grew up in Milton and live here now with my husband Nigel Gaiman and our family. I'm absolutely thrilled to see so many people working to improve the Milton Public Schools. I applaud the School Building Committee for its dedication and hard work. My children are in third and fifth grades today. Until last, until this year, they were at the Cunningham School. It's a nice school. My children had some fabulous teachers there. Education is very important to our family. My mother was a teacher, and my husband was a teacher. He still would be if it weren't for the money. At any rate, school and learning are important in our household. Like many parents in Milton, we want our children to become good lifelong learners, and we do what we can to make it happen. We limit television, we read to them, we read in front of them, we read with them, we buy lots of books and magazines, we travel, we discuss and... we buy lots of books and magazines, we travel, we discuss and so on, and we feel we send them to school ready to learn. I was and still am interested in making the schools better in Milton. My area of interest and focus has been the academic program. To that end, I've met with teachers and curriculum coordinators, attended school committee meetings. I've really followed the school committee meetings, poring over reports on budgets and test results, reading the state's curriculum framework and Milton's curriculum. I also gone into the site council at Cunningham. My point is that I did what I could to become informed about the academic situation at the elementary school level. I heard a lot of good news and positive stories at school committee meetings. The only bad news was the condition of the buildings. However, one of the big problems I found was lack of textbooks and materials for teachers and students in the elementary grades. My kids like yours were coming home with Xerox pieces of paper, some typed, some handwritten, some with typos and grammatical errors. I don't fault the teachers who created these materials. Teaching is a tough job that requires many different skill sets. It's our fault that we haven't given the teachers appropriate materials, that is, published textbooks and workbooks. Alice Casey, the former teacher who spoke last night, said she could teach anyone, anywhere if she had the textbooks. Your kids and teachers don't have the textbooks. We moved our son and daughter out of the public school this year. We're paying tuition now. Now, our kids are learning from textbooks and they're using workbooks and we can see a big difference. It's easier for the teachers to teach and for the students to learn. Now, the School Building Committee has done a fabulous job identifying the problem with the school buildings. They have been neglected. Pierce sounds like a horrible facility in which to stuff 1,000 students and their teachers. I agree that the school buildings need money and attention and the proposed solutions look and sound lovely. But I worry about the academic program. Last month, the elementary school principals requested more than $250,000 from the expected pothole money for textbooks and supplies for this academic year. They said that some programs, like social studies and science, have no textbooks. They said that some of the books that they have are so old that they're not worth having and the classroom supplies such as maps are outdated and unusable. I've also heard that students at Pierce are sharing math books. Last year, when my daughter was in fourth grade at Cunningham, she had what I would consider to be her first real social studies lessons, learning about the world and different areas and different countries. Hanging in the classroom was an old outdated map with the Soviet Union and other non-existent countries. My niece is in that same classroom at Cunningham this year in fourth grade and that same old inappropriate map still hangs for her class to see and learn from. My children now have books for every subject. They were all published in the 1990s. I only wish my daughter had had the same benefit in fourth grade and in third grade. And I wish the same for the children in the Milton Public Schools. That's why I'm speaking to you tonight. Like any investment, the new school building project carries risks and rewards. The rewards are obvious and tangible. New, well-lit, well-heated, well-ventilated, spacious learning grounds. The risks are not so clear. I believe the questions about how this project will affect the operating budget, which affects the academic program, have been glossed over. At the League of Women Voters Forum, a question was asked about what would happen to the operating budget with these new buildings. We were told that the only net new cost is $500,000 in annual expenses for energy with the new buildings. But of course, transportation costs will be more because now Tucker students who walk to school today will have to be bussed to the town farm at a cost of at least $35,000 per bus in today's dollars. And I would assume that the goal would be to reduce class size because the new classrooms, it appears to me, are designed to hold 21 students in grades one through five versus the current 25 students to a class. More teachers of course will cost more money. The project carries a risk that the taxpayers won't keep approving override after override to fund the academic program in addition to paying for the new buildings. This is the risk that scares me as one who cares about student performance. If you look at the measure of performance available to the schools, SATs, PSATs, MCAS, Iowa, California Achievement, you may realize that we've heard very little concrete information about Milton's student performance. We hear little pockets of success like the achievement tests alluded to by the administration and the few students who go on to Ivy League schools each year are lauded, as they should be. I looked up Milton's 1999 SAT scores on the Department of Ed's website today. I was shocked by the math scores. The state average math SAT score in 1999 was 505. The national average was 508. Milton's average was 500. I looked at some other communities that we tend to compare ourselves to and I'll just run through a few. Cohasset, 551. Canton, 553. Dedham, 513. Sharon, 567. Needham, 571. Brookline, 571. Milton, 500. Sometimes people refer to the participation rate, the number of students, the percentage of students who take the SATs as being high in Milton, but they're as high, if not higher, in all these other communities. And the verbal scores were higher than the state average. It's 504 for the state and Milton is 522, but the only community that I mentioned that got lower than we did was Dedham. Again, I've heard very little discussion about test results during the past year at school committee meetings. I didn't hear any analysis of the Iowa and CAT tests this summer, which usually occur, and perhaps I missed them. I've never heard any discussion about the SATs, the PSATs, and I heard a little bit about MCAS, although the vast majority of our elementary school children have been found to be deficient in language arts. I'd like to hear more. We've been told that we need new language arts books and curriculum to address this. My question is, when? When will it be a priority? Your children have one year in third grade, one year in fourth grade, one year in fifth grade. If they don't have appropriate books and materials each or any of those years, they lose. I would urge town meeting members to demand a more thorough discussion about the operating budget and the implications this project will have on it. The superintendent alluded to the operating budget in her speech on Monday night. She said she expected this project would lead to a renewed commitment to education in Milton. I've heard the same rationale from others in town. Build it and they will pay, seems to be the belief. Build the buildings and people will be so proud of them that they'll pay for better academic programs. Are you willing to assume the risk that this is going to occur? Please consider the risk that the entire generation of children now in our schools will pay a price if we put all our financial resources into buildings. They need books and maps and supplies now while they're in the second, third, fifth, eighth grade, whatever. They shouldn't have to wait until people who can't afford to pay these sizable tax increases sell their houses and new homeowners who can better afford to fund school programs move in. That turnover will take years. Granted, parents shouldn't have to decide between textbooks and new heating and ventilation systems, but that's reality. We make such choices in our lives at home and at work every day. Do you believe that new buildings will improve Milton's test scores? If so, when? Build it and they will pay. When will they pay to improve the academic program? The buildings will be completed over what I believe is the next five to seven years. In the meantime, will you be willing to sacrifice the quality of your children's and your grandchildren's education? It looks that way to me. How much does this plan mean you'll have to sacrifice? And how much are you willing to sacrifice? My family can afford to pay higher taxes for this building project, but the buildings are only one part of the problem today. I ask you as town meeting members to make sure that you don't gloss over the implications to the operating budget, which funds the academic programs. We don't want to end up with all our eggs in one basket, that is, all our resources in buildings. The time and attention of the school committee has been on buildings for some time now, if you watch their meetings. Not on the academic programs, not on student performance. This has also taken a huge amount of the administration's time and will take even more time if the project is approved. If it is approved, I hope you'll find a way to minimize the responsibility of the administration so that they can focus on improving the academic program and the performance of our children. I realize that what I'm saying may not be popular with a lot of people who have worked very hard to get this building project funded, but I have to wonder, do all the parents know about the academic problems in the schools? I suppose it's not the superintendent's job to tell us the bad news. She does a great job of telling us the good news. But somehow, shouldn't we understand the total picture and all the needs before we decide how much of our total resources we can and should spend on buildings? 500 on math SATs below the state and national averages. This is unacceptable for Milton. No usable books in core subjects for Milton's elementary school students. I don't mean all the core subjects, but some of them, multiple subjects. Terribly outdated and inadequate supplies. Increased operating costs for teachers and buses. These are expensive, competing problems and priorities that really need to be considered in the context of the new building project. And I hope that as town meeting members, you'll do just that tonight. Our schools, our town, and our children's future depends on it. Thank you.
Mr. Neely, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, you are recognized. Several questions were raised during last night's proceedings and because of the length of the proceedings, I made the judgment to proceed with the speakers who had been patiently standing. I wanted town meeting to know that I was fully aware that those questions had been asked. Those persons who asked the questions have every right to have them answered. Some of the questions were areas within the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen and for that reason, I recognize Mr. Neely. Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First question I want to address is the question raised by Mr. Shields and that question was, would it be easier to split the project? For example, if the project were phased in over a period of eight, 10, or 15 years? And that was one of the items that was looked at over the last few months. Our town accountant, Ed Spellman, did some analysis for all of the committees involved to analyze the costs if the projects were put off. For example, if all the elementary schools were delayed seven years and in that seven years, if the school building assistance rate were to continue at the same level, the additional costs on the capital side for the town, the net additional cost was $8.5 million, the additional cost for delay of seven years. Obviously, if it was eight or 10 years longer, you would add to that. That figure does not take into account the presumption that with the lack of additional space at the elementary schools, there would be a need for modular classrooms. So to that number, you would have to add the modular classrooms that would serve for that period of time until such time as you built the schools. In addition, that does not include a number that would be required to provide for structural improvements or holding patterns, if you will, or safety improvements. So the number that I gave you was the eight and a half. You will see separately in the materials that the school department has identified the need for as many as 42 modular classrooms if the entire project were not done. I believe I can dig through the material and I would think it was a lesser number for the elementary school portion. But at a minimum, there is a substantial cost in delay. If you look at the impact on the operating budget, that was looked at. The school department has provided us numbers and they can supplement what I'm saying right now and get into further detail. But in terms of the material that was provided to everyone, they have done a projection of costs going forward for five years on an operating basis. They did include additional costs for the transportation to the town farm. They had four buses included, for example, in that additional budget for the transportation to the town farm. There were increases in the budget for utility costs. Essentially, what you can do is that if you don't build these schools, you can back out the four buses and you can back out some of those additional utility costs, which were caused by larger classrooms and improved ventilation and obviously heating that goes with the larger classrooms. But the overall impact was small. If you look at the report that was presented on Monday night as you walked in the room, there was a five-year forecast for the town. If you see the deficit, the change in the overall deficit is not significant with the assumption being that the schools would have a need to go out and provide modular classrooms to provide space. So that overall, the impact on the operating budget with or without the school project is not material. And again, that was based upon the two pages that were available for you as you walked into this room on Monday night. So I think the key points are that with or without the school project, there are operating budget pressures. Those are addressed in two ways. The Warrant Committee has historically gone through and cut back on the requests. And secondly, obviously, the town has lobbied hard for additional state aid. The state aid estimates and local aid estimates are conservative. The collective bargaining is conservative. So there's a balance in the numbers that you received. So I hope that answers the question in terms of would it be easy to split the project? I don't think so. I think the answer is that it's similar to the analogies we heard last night from Senator Joyce and Mrs. Dunphy on the delay with the MWA project. You're going to pay and you're going to pay more the longer you delay and you're going to pay in some fashion. You're going to pay whether it be for the modular classrooms or the repairs and alterations and improvements to the existing facilities. Another question that was asked was with regard to, I believe, by Mr. Wilkinson and the Governor Stodden Fund and the use of the proceeds. That is something that has not been fully resolved, but certainly the addition of $615,000 to the Governor Stodden Fund would provide a substantial increase based on the income. There is not an intention at this point and yet to be fully discussed, but I haven't heard anybody discuss spending the $615,000. The intention would be obviously to earn the income on the $615,000 and to supplement the assistance we provide to town residents presently. Among the ideas that have been discussed and nothing is finalized, everything can change. Changes will change. But one of the ideas that's been discussed is try to provide some small amount of tax stipend or tax, and I will not use the word abatement because that is an assessor's term and that's an abatement process, but the idea was to address the issue of tax relief in some small fashion. That is among the ideas that the board has discussed in a brief way. Again, the board does provide historically assistance throughout the town in a confidential manner and this again would be on the basis of those who are low income, whether they be families or elderly, and that would be subject to further discussion. But if you were to earn 6% or so, or whatever you want to guess might be the interest rates when this occurs, you would be supplementing, providing additional assistance through the town, but that would have to be decided. But that would be used to supplement what we already do for the low income within the town and would substantially increase the fund. The fund right now, I believe, is less than $300,000. So the $615,000 would be a substantial increase in the overall fund. Obviously, by the way, we don't spend all the money now because we've received costs to repair the properties and we do have to save some funds in case we have to repair those properties. But overall, we would substantially increase the amount provided for the low income residents within the town with special pressing issues. I don't think that answers the questions, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Other questions were within the domain of the School Building Committee and for that reason, I recognize Charles Winchester, Chairman of the School Building Committee. Mr. Winchester.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise really to address certain of the matters that came up last evening rather than popping up and down as the evening goes along. There were a few points that I think deserve some attention. First, the School Building Committee appreciates the Park Department's willingness to continue working with us on the field designs and plans and we particularly want to thank Bern Lovely for assisting in that process. As I mentioned, Monday evening, change is necessary, particularly at Pierce, but I'm confident that working together, we can develop final plans which will benefit all children, which is our mutual goal and desire. And in that context, I would also mention that should this article pass and should it be approved by the electorate, we'll be in early contact with the Park Department because we have a June 1 deadline and getting the field designs set is going to be an early priority. So this is something that will move ahead very quickly. Second, there were questions raised last night and particularly with reference to the yellow handout that was distributed at the door. And I thought I'd address a couple of those issues. As to the concern that materials have not been selected for the buildings, that's absolutely true because we're hopefully now about to begin the final design process. But I think it should be noted that we showed a bunch of pictures on Monday night showing what modern schools are like. And I think it's also important to note that a building can look any way you want it to look, really. Certain unfavorable comparisons have been made with Town Hall and... But you know, if you've been around long enough, and I have, you might recall the fact that Town Hall... that Town Hall was designed as the result of a design competition and was selected by the town. So, you know, I think our committee would choose a different selection today, but I do think that, you know, you have to bear in mind that we're not going to be ridiculous. If we're going to rebuild Collicott next to a brick Cunningham, we're not going to use wood siding. Let's, you know, we're going to do something that's compatible, and I expect it to be brick, probably roughly the same color. Just as an aside, by the way, just a little bit of town history. When the Town Hall design was selected, Milton was the only town in the state that had an art commission, which resigned en masse. And now, no town has an art commission. As to construction costs, again, they were, there was a table compiled on the fourth page of the yellow handout, and I just wanted to make clear a couple of points. We were told that, you know, this shows that we're likely to confront tremendous cost overruns because the numbers there for the proposed Milton schools are so much below the New England Regional and Boston Society of Architects numbers. Well, bear in mind that the Glover, Collicott, Cunningham, and middle school projects involve renovation addition, whereas the other numbers beside them are for new construction. I would hope that when you're doing some renovation, it's not going to cost as much as new construction, or you might as well do new construction. And I also note that the numbers are very comparable to the Boston Society of Architects numbers. If you look at the Town Farm and High School, which are brand-new buildings, the numbers above the Boston Society of Architects numbers, although below the New England Regional numbers, which I suspect, but I don't know, may include college construction as well as public school construction, and I think that may explain the difference. Also, I'll note, with reference to the Note B on the bottom, it's true that the Boston Society of Architects numbers are not the result of a published report of the Boston Society of Architects, but rather, they were compiled by a committee of the Boston Society of Architects, and were made available to the town by DRA, which is, had access to those committee numbers. We're very confident that the numbers that we're presenting are good numbers. Indeed, DRA has a history, having been in the business for 70 years, but a recent history of coming in under budget on most projects. Indeed, I think it was Marlborough, was it Marlborough or Middleborough that you visited? Middleborough, I'm sorry. Some members of the Warrant Committee visited Middleborough School that was shown on some of the slides on Monday night, and encountered ecstatic, an ecstatic reception because the people there were so astounded at the money they saved, and the result was, in their case, they were able to provide a great deal of equipment that had not been thought possible until the contracts were entered into with the contractors. So I think that we feel very comfortable with those numbers. A few other quick points. As to Tucker, yeah, the state indeed does have a policy favoring renovation, but, and I meant to bring up from my briefcase and neglected when I came to the podium, I have a letter from Commissioner Driscoll which emphasizes, provided that the renovation project meets the standards. And in addition, another qualification is that if the cost of renovation exceeds 50% of new construction, you should look carefully at it because in that case, particularly when you're renovating and you start tearing apart walls, you may find conditions you didn't anticipate, and that could indeed lead to some cost problems. Also, it was stated that we had not conducted a feasibility study, and it's, that's just not true. The first step in our process was a feasibility study. In fact, the School Building Assistance Bureau requires that, and what, we've gone beyond that with what we have here today with our preliminary designs, but there was a two-volume report given to, as I mentioned, on Monday night, given to the various boards and committees of the town. The Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Warrant Committee, and others was placed in the public library and was announced in the papers and lord knows where else. And it presents, in the main volume, the, not only the scenarios which are mentioned in the warrant at pages 23 and 24, but it gives a fair amount of detail on options at each school building, as many as six or seven options at each school building that were looked at before we, A, determined a master plan, and B, got past that stage and went forward with the preliminary plans. Another point that was mentioned was concern that our plan at Pierce will not handle the 250 or so automobiles noted recently around the high school and various parking spaces and on the roadways. I'm sure that it was not noted, but if you were to look at the site plan on page 32, it shows in rather small type, unfortunately, having been reduced to the warrant size from a blueprint-sized drawing, that the plan at the Pierce site includes 391 parking spaces, more than anticipated need, but to provide for events, to provide adequate parking for students. There are some seniors particularly who drive visitors, faculty, and others who might be there. And we think that that was one of our major concerns. It was a major concern of the neighborhood, and we designed, or rather, DRA designed the space so that there would be adequate parking with no need for anyone to park in I'll just make a brief comment about interest rates. I don't know if anyone's going to deal with that more specifically, but I think that the interest rates quoted are accurate. Perhaps, they were, they were high when, when the estimates were prepared. They're probably closer to reality today. And I guess the answer is, I can't predict with any certainty, and I don't know who can, what interest rates will be five years from now, or whenever permanent bonding is ended, and nor can I predict whether it will snow on February 8th. But the projections appear to be reasonable, and I think that the point is that if we insist on certainty of rates or on other facts or other future events before we act, we'll never act because we'll never have the certainty. We mustn't let fear of the future deter us from needed action. In my view and the view of the School Building Committee, we must act now to sustain the vitality and the vibrancy of a wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winchester. Before we proceed with debate, there are two other procedural rules I just wanted to remind, point out to Town Meeting. The first is that all questions should come through the moderator. I just wanted to reiterate that. It makes for a more orderly proceeding, and it just makes for the flow. It also alerts me to the fact of what the question is. Questions are not directed to a speaker. They are directed through the moderator for distribution as is appropriate. The second point is this, that Town Meeting members can always speak if recognized by the moderator, and the way to get recognized by the moderator is to go to a microphone and get my attention, with the exception of some of the officials on the front of the auditorium. That is the way to do it. Get my attention by going to the microphone. If you do not, if you are not recognized by the moderator, you do not have the right to speak to Town Meeting. The second point is to remind everyone, for the record, as well as for the information of your fellow members who may not know who you are, please state your name and your precinct number when you start to speak. Thank you. On the subject matter of Article 4, does any Town Meeting member wish to be heard? Mr. Marlin, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, I'm James G. Marlin, Jr. I hail from Precinct 5, where we're low on population and high on assessment. We had a lot of nostalgia here last night, and I do love nostalgia. I can tell you that 20 years ago, I left my post here in the front row as a member of the School Committee, and it's been nine years since I've left my post here as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I haven't come up to the front of this auditorium in that nine years. Go over here to the side microphone, because I consider myself an elder statesman. Some would say, just an elder. But it's been 31 years since I held meetings here in this auditorium. In those days, I was the president. So you can see, Mr. Moderator, I started at the top, and I've been working my way down ever since. But we've had enough talk. We're here for a vote tonight. We've spent $400,000. $400,000. But what I need to know, and I need to know it from the Chairman of the Building Committee, my old School Committee colleague, and that is, if this party tonight fails to give the two-thirds vote, what then happens with the Building Committee? I'd appreciate if you could answer that now, Mr. Winchester.
Mr. Marlin, was that question directed to the moderator?
Mr. Moderator, I would, through you. This is what they say on C-SPAN, through you.
You're getting more statesman-like by the minute, Mr. Marlin.
I'd like to ask Mr. Winchester, what would happen with the Building Committee if this Town Meeting tonight fails to, to provide a two-thirds vote?
If Mr. Winchester wishes the answer to the question, you have the podium, sir.
Well, I think I can say that we're out of charge and out of money. I think that we would need to regroup, think through what alternate plan might be possible. I'm not aware that there is one at the moment, and I think it would require a great deal of study, and I think we'd need a further appropriation in order to continue.
Town Meeting members, I'd just like to add to that. I probably should have thrown my oar in the water and not embarrassed Mr. Winchester in that, but this, the School Building Committee was appointed by you in May of 1998, and their charge at that time was to plan the construction alteration, renovation, remodeling, and furnishing of school buildings. At that time, $350,000 was appropriated, and subsequently, you appropriated additional money. The short answer to the question is, if this project is not approved by either Town Meeting tonight or by the electorate in February, this particular plan as proposed is not approved. It doesn't necessarily mean it's the end of the story, however. That's ultimately your decision. This committee still was charged with planning, and if they had money to do that, they could come up with an alternate plan. That plan would have to be approved by Town Meeting. They might have to seek additional money for that purpose, but in essence, the answer to the question is, number one, this particular project would not have been approved. The committee would then have to make a judgment. Do they proceed further? They would have the authority to proceed further, and if so, would they come up with a similar plan, an alternate plan, a revised plan? Do they need additional money? In either event, they would have to come to, for this party, to get approval for that. I hope that answers the question.
Mr. Moderator, may I continue?
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Winchester. As you know, for the past year, every single time I would see you, I'd say, where's Plan B, Mr. Winchester? Where's Plan B? I do have a motion here tonight, which I'm not going to offer, and it is for a Plan B, for the committee to go back for Plan B. However, I'm not going to offer it because, from what Mr. Winchester has said tonight, if this should fail tonight, the committee would go back and look further at the school needs. If it should fail with the voters, I would suspect that the same thing would be done. So I think we're getting to Plan B, which has been my desire since the committee has I was not here, I was not of age, when the vote school was demolished by the town of Milton. My mother happened to have gone to school there. I never saw the building, but I've seen pictures of it. It looks like the Library or Congress. We could certainly have used that building and that space today. I was still at Milton High School when the old Town Hall was demolished, another building that could have been renovated and utilized to this very day. We don't have to go very far to find buildings that have been renovated. We can go to Randolph, and I never thought I'd be suggesting we go to Randolph for an example, but that's what I'm saying. Take a look at the old Stetson School and see what a wonderful job has been done in turning the old Stetson School into the new Town Hall. Down to the Old Willard School in Quincy, not too very far, to see what can be done with old buildings. But in Milton, we have to knock everything down. I don't believe in it. And let me tell you, I don't see any bulldozers down at Milton Academy knocking down any of their old buildings. I live in an old building myself, 170 years old. If I went by the committee's standards, I'd be homeless, and the place would have been knocked down. But I kind of like the old place up on the hill, and I can tell you this, my Board of Assessors kind of like it, too. They sent me a letter recently. They like it a little more this year than they did last year. Our Tucker School is a school that has tremendous, tremendous pride. It's a neighborhood school, school where the children walk to school. A school in the woods is no alternative to the Tucker School when you can walk to school. We need a Plan B, Mr. Winchester. We need Plan B. People said we don't want to get involved in a political decision. We have to go to the voters, kind of political. We have to have a plan that the people can support, that can go out at this Town Meeting with unanimous support from this Town Meeting. But the thing that bothers me the most is how did we get here, each and every one of us, outside of the eight that were elected by the caucus recently? We got here by the votes of our family, our friends, and our neighbors, who thought we would use our best judgment on town affairs and to do the right thing to the best of our ability. How many of the members here have told me personally, I'm going to vote to put this question on the ballot, but I'll be down at those polls right away? You open at 7:00, don't you, Jimmy? Yes, I do. I'll be down... I'll be down there right away to vote against it. Well, the advice is old, but it's as good today as it was when it was first given. And the advice is, above all else, to thy known self be true. So the town meeting members are shirking their duties. You're not doing what we were sent here to do. That is, what is best, and what we think is best, and what we think in here is best, and what we were sent here to do. Some say we have to exercise leadership. Well, I always thought leadership was if somebody was following. We've tried this approach before, leadership. And we've had the following results. In 1995, at this town meeting, we had a proposal for a new library. At that meeting, 84% of this town meeting voted to send that proposal along to the 16% of the members of this town meeting voted against sending that proposal along to the voters. When we had the election, 61% of our citizens who sent us here said no. 39% said yes to the new library. In 1998, again, this town meeting had a question, school override question to put before the voters. 77% of this town meeting said yes, send that question on to the voters. 23% of this town meeting said no, we have to exercise our responsibility, no, this question shouldn't go on. When we got to the polls, the citizens, the same ones that sent us here, 61% of those voters said no. 39% of those voters said yes to that particular question. I'd say what we have here is failure to communicate. And for those that think that my material is a little dated, young people have a song now, and it goes something like, you say yeah, 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 and I say no, no, no. So I'd say to you, what the voters are saying is no, and we are saying yes. We're not representing the people that sent us here. This is a representative town meeting. This is not open town meeting. We spent $400,000. What will happen if we do have this election on the 8th of February, and the voters say no? We will have achieved nothing. We need to exercise leadership, and we need to scale down the proposal. But I think we can do a service tonight, and that is, if just one-third of our members say no, the building committee will go back to the table and come up with another proposal. I would hope that that proposal would not involve the demolition of any of our school I attended a breakfast not too long ago, in which Governor Salucci was the speaker. Governor Salucci said, and I immediately, when I get back to the office that morning, called Mr. Winchester's home and spoke with Mrs. Winchester and told her what the governor had said. And what he said was, our school formula for schools is incorrect. It's wrong. We need to be funding renovation to school buildings in addition to new construction. We have the Speaker of the House, who has a precinct in the Town of Milton. We have two aggressive and capable members of the Town of Milton that represent us in the legislature. I am sure that we can get help from them. We need to do what we were sent here to do. We need to serve. We need to lead, and we need to represent. So I'd urge the town meeting members, who've spoken to me and told me they're going to vote against this at the polls, but vote in favor of it tonight, let's say no tonight. Let's send the building committee back to come back with a reasonable proposal. No, no demolition of schools, no school in the woods, no closing a Tucker School. Those would be three things that should not be on the table. So I'd urge the town meeting members tonight to say no to this proposal and not to send it to the voters on the 8th of February. Thank you.
Sir, you're recognized. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, ma'am, the woman on the left who spoke to me before town meeting, you're recognized.
For the first time, Betsy Buckbinder, Precinct 11. For the first time, I rise at town meeting, because 24 telephone calls and 23 letters had one common element. The constituents that I represent in Precinct 11 want the opportunity to vote. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was privileged to teach in my beloved Tucker School for 25 years, under conditions that are far different than those that the present faculty face. If I still had my blackboard, and I were teaching a lesson on the power of descriptive words, I would use those we have heard repeatedly over the past two evenings. Crowded, archaic, obsolete, abominable, dangerous, crumbling. But let us erase those words, and instead substitute words to move us this evening. Commitment, sensitivity, vision. Commitment to our children, sensitivity to our seniors, and vision for the entire community. As we are all aware, this special town meeting, in the words of the warrant itself, has been called to consider what may be the most significant issue the town has ever faced. Over the past two nights, we have repeatedly and repeatedly heard the issues and the ramification of those issues. We have engaged in debate with our peers, with our peers here, with friends and neighbors back at our homes. I feel no need for repetition. But I ask you now to permit this issue to go to the public at large, the people who should also be given the opportunity to express themselves, because the impact will be on all of us, on the children we love, because it is their future that concerns us as parents and grandparents, and on those seniors who, for a variety of reasons, may feel their homes are now too much and are ready to sell them, but to whom, if the reputation of the town and its school system is less than desirable? The decision that we make tonight impacts all of us, elected and non-elected Milton voters. We would do our community an injustice if we do not permit the people, the people that we represent, to give them the right to confront the issues themselves. Franklin Delano Roosevelt, in one of his many fireside chats, said, "Never before have we had so little time in which to do so much. The only limit to our realization of tomorrow will be our doubts of today. Let us move forward with strong and active faith." Thank you.
May I be recognized to speak?
Hi, my name is Ann White, and I'm representing Precinct Nine. I had some procedural questions, but I just want to have one comment and then a question. I will vote for this tonight, and I see that in this auditorium, there seems to be a lot of polarization, either for or against. And I don't want to be perceived by asking a question representing Precinct Nine that I'm against this, but there is some concern that needs to be addressed between now and the election, from people who are very worried about the amount of money this is going to cost them. And I've heard from more than one person in recent experience about the senior center and how that started out at $80,000, $88,000, and ended up at $700 and something thousand. There are architects behind this, there are building committees behind this, and people are worried. It was good that Mr. Winchester dealt with some of these issues tonight, but I would not underestimate that worry amongst the people who will be voting on February 8th. Now, my last, my original procedural question was to try to limit speakers up here, so following my own. Do I have the right as a town meeting member to call the question?
You absolutely do, Ms. White. Are you moving the previous question?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
That motion is not debatable, but let me explain what it is. It requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting to pass. If town meeting votes yes on the motion, what you have done is provided that from here on, no speaker may speak more than once and/or for longer than five minutes without permission of town meeting, with one exception, the chairman of the warrant committee may speak to close debate, but for not more than five minutes. You have before you a motion for the previous question. It is not debatable.
Can I add a point of order? Have we even read the article?
The...
Do you think this is debate before even reading the article? Am I not correct about that?
The point of order is, have we read the article?
Have we read Article Four?
The answer is no.
Okay. So what's the question? What's the question?
The question is to limit debate on Article Four. Debate would continue. If town meeting votes yes on the question by a two-thirds vote, what you would have done is provided that debate may continue, but no person may speak more than once from here on end, and no person may speak for more than five minutes, with one exception, the chairman of the warrant committee may speak to close debate, but only for five minutes. Debate would continue, and before you vote, I would be sure you have the article and recommendation before you. On the motion for the previous question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
The motion carries for previous question. Ms. White, do you wish to continue speaking?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Cokel, you're recognized.
Rick, can you do that again? I don't know how you're doing it, Bill, sorry.
Ms. Cokel, you have the floor.
Okay, I just have a few brief comments about the yellow paper in the comments I made yesterday. To sum it up, all I'm telling you is that the cost estimate you have before you of $114 million plus interest is not a cost estimate at this stage. What you have is something like a budget or a plan, that hopefully that's what it will be. At this stage, you should put a range of plus or minus 50% around that number. You cannot cost something that you cannot define. I've spent 30 years in the business. You can talk to others who have. You cannot cost what you cannot define. That's the end of that. And then I had one question. Mr. Moderator, I would appreciate it if you could request town council to explain legally...
If I can find him, we'll be happy to ask the question, Ms....
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Could he explain legally, why, could you ask him to explain legally, why the warrant, as I've read it, is not contingent on the state paying 61%? And number two, could you ask the town council to state his legal opinion on whether the taxpayers of Milton are on the hook for any portion of the 61% that the state does not pay due to politics or whatever? Thank you.
You're welcome. The answer to the first question is that the reason that the article and the recommendation is not contingent upon receipt of the SBAB reimbursement is actually two reasons. The first reason is that Massachusetts law does not permit us to make an appropriation of money contingent upon an event unless there is specific legislative authority to do that. An example is a Proposition Two and a Half referendum question. The Proposition Two and a Half statute specifically permits towns to condition an appropriation upon a successful referendum question. That's why you see that language at page 57 of your book. We've learned this through painful experience with the uncertainty of the pothole and monies for schools. So that's the legal reason why they're in. There's also a practical reason why it's not conditioned, namely that it was a very strong feeling, as I understand it, of the warrant committee and the school building committee, as well as the school committee, that even if such a condition were legal, which it's not, it would not have permitted Milton to spend the money to prepare the plans necessary to submit an application for SBAB reimbursement. It's kind of a chicken or egg situation. So for those two reasons, this requested appropriation is not contingent upon receipt of SBAB reimbursement. However, the recommendation on page 57 does contain a limitation on the expenditure of money, which is permitted. If this vote were to, excuse me, if this recommendation were to be voted as presented, the Town of Milton would have appropriated $114,754,000, conditioned upon the two Proposition Two and a Half referendum question being voted. If that question were voted on February 8th, Milton would then have appropriated $114,754,000. But you would have been prohibited in spending up to $4 million until Milton receives notice from the Department of Education that Milton's application for the school project has been accepted for placement on the SBAB priority list. What that means is this, if the end result of all that process is that the project is not approved either in Hall or in POT, then Milton would have to make the decision. If it's approved in total, then you have appropriated the money by the town meeting vote. That condition has been met by the successful referendum. You now have bond authorization for $114 million. You spent $4 million of that to get the application filed, and when you get notice that the application is on the school building assistance priority list, you then could spend the rest. That would all have an impact on your tax rate. If, however, the end result of that process was that either the project itself wasn't approved, or some but not all of the project was approved, then you, Milton Town Meeting, along with your financial officials, would have to make a decision at that time, do you adjust your appropriation? Do you reduce your bond authorization? So the answer to the question, what the impact on the tax rate is, depends upon the success, number one, of the override, obviously, of tonight's vote, two, of the ballot question of February 8th, and three, of the application to the State Department of Education. In the event that the approval is not complete, it might be that sometime in the future, you would consider reducing the bond authorization. That would have the ultimate impact on your tax rate. You may then end up with less than the $114 million appropriated at that time, but you wouldn't know that until that time. I hope that answers the question.
Would we have to put it in the mail? I just don't understand the last part of the question. Would the taxpayer be liable or not?
Ms. Cokel, would you come to the microphone, please?
Sorry. Does it work well on? No.
I can hear you, yes.
All I'm trying to figure out is, and I know you probably answered my question, but you answered it legally, and I don't understand it. I'm trying to find out if it didn't pass, if we pass this tonight, and it passes the town on... the town on February eighth, and then the state comes along and doesn't give us sixty-one percent for all the projects, the taxpayer is liable for the difference that the state doesn't give us, and gives us forty percent? The taxpayer is liable unless someone does something to stop it?
The answer depends upon what decision Milton makes at that time. Maybe yes, if you decide to go forward with the project, but maybe no, if you decide to go forward with less than that. In other words, if you get less than sixty-one percent reimbursement, a financial decision has to be made. The plan, as I understand it from day one, is to have sixty-one percent reimbursement. So, it is quite possible, but I can't speak for the planners, that at that time, they would consider a different proposal that would mean less money for Milton, and in that case, Milton would not be liable for the entire difference.
I'm sorry if I'm not being clear here, but what I'm just trying to find out is, would somebody have to take an action? I'm not saying what anybody would think in the future or do, but let's say we pass it tonight, it passes on February eighth, state comes along and says you can have fifty percent or forty percent. Now, if nobody does anything else and just keeps proceeding, are the taxpayers then liable because we voted tonight and they voted on February eighth for the difference between, say, forty and sixty-one, if that were the number?
The answer is yes, because town meeting would have approved one hundred and fourteen plus million dollars, and some action would have to be taken to change that figure.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm sorry.
That's right. If, by the way, if any town meeting member doesn't understand anything that I have said, don't be shy, that's why we're here, and if it's too legalistic for you, then don't be shy about asking for a clarification. Mr. Winchester, do you wish to be recognized?
Just in connection with that last question, I, I just thought perhaps I should refer to the letter of August twenty-four, nineteen ninety-nine, from the School Building Assistance Group Acting Administrator at the time, Christine Lynch, confirming the school needs conference that was held. And she noted, and I'm just going to read one sentence, actually, or maybe two. "The current reimbursement rate for your school district is sixty-one percent. This rate will be in effect through June thirty, two thousand. If your project is presented to the Board of Education before that date, the grant will be sixty-one percent of construction and interest cost. Please be advised that all required documentation for an approved capital grant application must be received on or before June one, two thousand, in order to be placed on the fiscal year two thousand and one priority list." All I can say is that if there were any significant change in that sixty-one percent, I'm sure we'd be back here, because I don't think we'd take it on our own responsibility to commit the town to a greater expenditure than what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winchester. Which speaker was next? I'm sorry. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Kelly, Precinct Eight. I want to start out by thanking all the people who have put in countless hours to bring Milton to this point. Without each of your personal sacrifices, Milton would not be at this crossroad. I have lived in Milton most of my life. I was educated in Milton Public Schools. My parents have served the town in either elected or volunteer positions for thirty years. They continue to do so today. My husband, Paul, and I have three children currently enrolled in Milton Public Schools, one in second grade and one in kindergarten, both at Cunningham, and one in the integrated preschool program here at the high school. I am presently on the site council at Cunningham and am a member of the PTO. I consider myself a strong supporter of Milton Public Schools. As echoed by everyone who has spoken on this issue, there is no doubt that our children need and deserve better schools. I, too, want my three children to go to new and vibrant classrooms like those shown in the DRA presentation. I feel compelled to speak to you tonight, and believe me, I would rather not be standing here, to raise the issues about what is happening inside our classrooms, the other part of the education equation. I believe what happens inside the classroom is as, if not more, important than the classroom itself. Yet in discussions thus far, I have heard little about this crucial part of excellent education. I hope everyone understands that the building committee has never been charged with investigating the school operating budget. Their scope has only been the buildings. We, as town meeting members, however, do have that charge. To that end, I have tried to examine the school operational budget, and I feel I must report on the following. First, this year, fiscal year two thousand, there have been significant cuts at the elementary level in gym, music, and art. Gym has been cut from two times a week to one. In music, the length of class has been cut, and the upper grade chorus has been eliminated. In art, some of our classes have been shortened to once a week, some have slightly longer classes twice a month. Kindergarten, of which my son goes to, has no art at all. Now, in a town that prides itself on program offerings, this should never have been allowed to happen. Second, as a part of the elementary principals' request last year for fiscal year two thousand, they requested spelling books for grades three, four, and five, grammar books for grades three, four, and five, science books for grade five, and social study books and materials for grades one through five. To date, only some of those books and materials have been purchased, as they are still on the principal's list for this fiscal year's budget, for the coming fiscal year's budget. Third, the estimated fiscal year two thousand and one school budget listed on your handout that projects for five years does not restore the elementary teachers in art, music, and gym. In fact, there are no teachers factored into this budget until fiscal year two thousand and three, where four new teachers will be added as a result of enrollment. Please note that they are only budgeted for twenty-five thousand dollars each. This year, newly hired teachers are budgeted at thirty-eight thousand. These are just three operational budget, budget issues, and they only deal with elementary level, and I'm sure there are more, but they are significant enough for me, for me to say, wait, my children's education depends on it. If we are asking town meeting to make judgments on the viability of this plan, let's make sure we present them with all the facts. I believe Milton must look at both sides of the education equation, and we do not ask, and we should not ask the people of this town to approve funding without giving them the, the same effort investigation into the operational budget. Are there operational savings that might be made by changing these present plans that if we go ahead now, we will be, will be lost? Now, some have said, let this vote go to the people and let them decide. I would agree, as long as we give them the facts on the educational impact made in the figures and statement in the warrant. I haven't heard them discussed. Others have said...
Ms. Cal, excuse me, you have one minute.
Thank you. Others have said, let's get started on the buildings, and we'll make sure we fix the operating budget in the future. I am not willing to take that risk for my children's education, and for that reason, I urge you to vote against this article as written. Do our children need and deserve improved school buildings? Without a doubt, but they also need and deserve improved programs, textbooks, and materials, and adequate numbers of well-paid teachers. Do I think that all this work must be, that has been done this far, should be thrown away? No. Milton must continue with this process, evaluate the operational budget, establish the needs in books, materials, teachers, and figure out a way to do both. Building classrooms and excellent education inside those classrooms. When I was getting ready for tonight's meeting, I wondered whether Mr. Kaler might be right. Maybe it was the process. Maybe back in nineteen ninety-eight, when we established a school building committee, we should have also established a school educational needs committee. I hope we will have an opportunity to do that tonight. Let's make sure we can do both, the excellent classrooms and the excellent education. Let's truly make Milton the education town.
Ma'am, you're recognized.
Donna Robinson, Precinct Seven. It's been duly noted, I've been the water lady at the town meeting, I'll get anyone water, but if Jane Swift comes, I refuse to change that diaper. Back in the days of Yogi Berra, there was a reporter assigned to the New York Yankees, and he noted that Yogi's suitcase was quite beat up and ready for the trash heap. So, he said to Yogi, "Yogi, why don't you do yourself a favor and treat yourself and get yourself a new suitcase?" And Yogi said, "Why would I do that? I only use it when I travel." I think there's an analogy with the buildings, I haven't quite figured it out, but I'll let you guys ponder that tonight. I just have a couple of stories I'd like to share with you about schools and kids. Many of you know I have four children, all attend the Milton Public Schools. I have a seven-year-old who's quite funny in her own way. She was traveling in a neighbor's car and saw one of the friends' bumper stickers, and she said, "Oh, look, there's my mom's bumper sticker," which it isn't. And she said, "Our town, our schools stink, and our future stinks," which sort of was funny, so of course I had to tell her sisters what the seven-year-old said. And my twelve-year-old quickly quipped, "Yeah, what kind of future can a kid from Milton have?" So, I looked for a hole to crawl, and this is a true story, broke my heart. I just have a couple of other points I'd like to make as far as bringing this to the vote to the people. Last week, I had my dog on a leash at Andrews Field. Thank you, Dave Purdy, also for here, for leaving that barrel out. And I saw a neighbor of mine who was from Ireland, and she was all excited, she said, "Oh, I'm so excited, Donna, because I've become a citizen, January twelfth," which coincidentally is today. So, congratulations, I won't say the name. And she said, "I'm so excited, because this will be the first time I get to vote in an election in the United States." And I said, "Well, isn't that great?" And of course, I gave her a voter registration card right away. And she said, "You know," and again, I'm from Precinct Seven East Milton near Andrews Field, we're just, you know, a modest neighborhood, working hard, small houses. She said to me, "You know, I'm all for the schools, because I'm home with my kids, my husband's a builder, and I won't be able to send my kids to private or parochial schools, so whatever I need to do for the schools, I'll be there." And this woman just wants the chance to have a say. If we don't give her the chance, if we don't give us the two-thirds vote, she doesn't get her vote. And I think that for a new U.S. citizen who's so excited with her two young children, she deserves the chance to vote. That's really all I have to say. There's only one last thought. Whatever way this vote goes tonight, we're all friends, we're all neighbors, we are a community, and I don't mean to sound sappy, but I want it to stay that way. I think Milton is a great town. I'm not from this town, I'm from Quincy, that explains my colors, it's not Milton High red, it's North Quincy red and black. It's a great town, I've met a lot of wonderful people, and I look forward to going forward with the schools, and I thank you all for your time.
Ma'am, you're recognized.
Ms. Moderator, Mary McNamara, Precinct Ten. Donna and I grew up in Quincy, in the same neighborhood. Tonight, I'd like to address the town meeting concerning the slogan of the Friends, "Our Town, Our Schools, Our Future." I am an ardent, and I am a vocal supporter of each. I have spoken from town meeting floor many times in the past about overcrowded classrooms, leaky gym roofs, and the general bad condition of the schools. I also know there's not enough textbooks in many of the classrooms, there's not enough paper at the Pierce Middle School. Those of you who know me know that I have no greater priority than the children of our town. I'm the mother of three children, all of whom have attended the Milton Public Schools, two are in the Pierce School now. I have been a school volunteer for many years at Collicott. I know the difference that good schools, good principals, good teachers can make. And so, I am firmly in favor of beginning the construction of new schools or the renovation of schools here in Milton, and I am in favor of that starting now. But I rise to say, very sadly, that I will be voting against this plan. Why? Because I believe in its current form, it amounts to a huge and unnecessary political gamble. Now, let me explain. First of all, we owe an enormous debt of gratitude to the members of the school building committee. I have served on many committees, I know the time it takes, I know the dedication, we all see it. Because of your hard work, the concern of the average voter over the worsening condition, conditions of our schools has never been higher. This almost universal concern is a major, significant achievement. In fact, I think the town's current attention to this problem is a valuable asset, a form of capital, if you will, which is available to the supporters of a building program. However, I fear that we may be squandering that capital. In my opinion, a plan that would call for the immediate construction of two new schools in Milton, consistent perhaps with the initial phase of the current building committee plan, would have unprecedented, overwhelming support. The town is ready for it and would embrace it. The ear would be taken out of all the political balloons, literally and figuratively. We could join hands, we could send a message to our children, Donna, and we can say to our kids, "We are behind you, we are working together to do our best for you." Everyone could be excited about what lies ahead. No politics, no controversy, and most importantly, no gambling on the future of our schools and our town. The existing plan, as comprehensive and bold as it may be, may win a split override vote in February, or it may lose a vote in February.
Ms. McNamara, excuse me, you have a minute left, keep it proceeding.
Let's talk about what will follow. If the plan survives a close vote, the plan will proceed, but the doubts and skepticism may remain. What sort of atmosphere will prevail when future town meetings debate the many follow-up issues of building design, traffic, maybe even some additional level of funding which we may need? We must be practical. The process will not end in February, it will only begin. Do we want a united town, working on these major school issues over the next few years, or a divided one? If the plan loses a close vote in February, what will happen then? Undoubtedly, there will be an effort to revise the plan to a less ambitious one. Additional months, or maybe even years, could be lost. This is not in the best interests of our children. I realize that building two buildings does not solve all up-school problems. I also realize that postponing renovation or construction means the final bill may be higher, but don't all of us face that same issue each day when we make a choice about a car that we may buy, a house that we may buy, a dress that we may buy? I have great faith that we will all act prudently here. I have great faith that the future of the town will be safe. I think if Milton builds two schools and manages the effort well, the town will unite, stronger than ever, behind a plan to finish the job. I hope that we will take this type of step. Make no mistake, if an override vote fails in February, and no school construction begins this year, it will not be a defeat for any one particular political group. It will be a defeat for our children. Thank you.
Mr. Marlin, you're recognized.
Peter Marlin, excuse me. Peter Marlin, Precinct Three. This article is going to require a two-thirds vote. I'd like to address my comments to those members of the town meeting who are undecided. In general, in the past, I've been a supporter of the school committee, school articles before the town meeting, and as I approached this town meeting, I had serious concerns, serious questions with regard to this article. Over the course of preparation for the meeting and the meeting itself, I've become absolutely, totally convinced that this article is a good article... that this article is a good article. It deals with the problem. It's in the financial interest of this town to pass this article and to pass it tonight. I want to try and address some of the questions that have been raised. People have said, "Why is it all or nothing? Why isn't there some other alternative?" The last speaker suggested that we do just the first two schools. I assume that that's the high school and the Pierce School, or the replacement middle school. If you look in the warrant, just those two schools are $67 million. If you want to address the elementary problem at the same time, the Newtown Farm School and presumably most other elementary schools of the size we need is $14 million. You add those up, and you're over $80 million. If you're willing to send an $80 million project to the voters of this town, then I say, "Vote yes now, and let's send this plan to the town and let them vote." People say, "Isn't there a risk that if we go to the voters and they don't pass this, where are we? We've done nothing?" Yes, there is a risk. But the need is huge, and we have to take that risk. There's also a risk if you submit a $20 million, or a $30, or a $40, or a $50 million proposal to the voters of this town. We have to have detailed plans for whatever schools we want to get reimbursement by June 1st. This is a plan that we can have those plans for. We can meet that deadline, and we can get on that list. And there are tremendous risks to missing that deadline. There are towns all across this state that are considering school projects. If we get on that list this year, we can be reasonably sure that the state will reach us within three to five years. We'll get our 61% reimbursement, and we'll be able to deal with this problem. If we miss this year's deadline, we have no idea when the state would reach us, and we have less assurance that we would get 61%. June 1st is a critical deadline. We need to make it. Mr. Mullen earlier suggested that we vote no. I think in part because he thinks that the voters of this town won't approve this proposal. I say to you that the way to find out whether or not the voters will support this proposal is to submit the proposal to the voters. If they don't pass it, we will be no worse off than if this town meeting votes no. Because in either case, we won't have any plans to submit to the state, and we'll have to incur the risk of being lower down on the list and perhaps a lower reimbursement.
Mr. Mullen, you have one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Every member of this town meeting has got to think whether they want to see this article decided by the voters of the town or not. If you think that the need is there, if you think the plan is a good plan to deal with the problem of the schools, then let's let the voters decide. Let's approve it tonight. Every vote counts. Approve it. Submit it to the voters. Let them decide. Thank you.
Is Mrs. Cannon in the hall?
Right.
I'm sorry. You asked to be recognized earlier. You have the... Mrs. Cannon, you have the floor. Apologize for the oversight. I'm getting old and forgetful here.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I wanted to come and just speak very briefly about the difference between our operating budget and the capital project that's before you tonight. Our operating budget, it's no secret to any of you, because we come here practically yearly to tell you that our needs exceed the operating costs that we are given by this town, the money that we're given to cover our needs. We're always in need on the operating side. And whether or not we build new buildings, we are not going to have an improved situation because our buildings do not go through. So keep that separate, because they are separate. So that's all I'm trying to bring up. I've heard it a number of times tonight, and it's a very important point. We are going to have operating needs. Our needs are great. The buildings need to be repaired. The buildings cannot stay as they are. You need to vote tonight to give us an educational environment that we can begin to improve for our children. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Young Statesman Mullen, I hold you in the highest regard, and I just wanted to reiterate what you told me today. I thought you said was very well said, and I disagree. On a few points, I just saw... I just used this idea. If you had a pet... Unfortunately, this is going towards... This is an indirect equation with your children, but try not to think it that way. If you had a pet, and you put it in a small cage, that pet would get angry, and the pet really wouldn't do much. And when it got out of the cage, it really wouldn't do much, would it? Why don't you put all your little pets... I'm sorry, children, in a school the size of Tucker? A little bit like a cage, not even anything close to what the town farm would be, where they could... As the term was yesterday, sprawl. If you look at Ed Reform, which I was on a board when I was in high school as representative to the Board of Education, we looked at Ed Reform every couple of weeks or so. I had to go in and talk about it. And I was very much against many of the things that were there. And someone spoke earlier at this microphone about art being cut and things like that. Well, there are tremendous requirements of this core curriculum that Milton High School has to now integrate into their system. And for that reason, a lot of things have to shift it around. I'm sure it wasn't supposed to be on a permanent basis, you know, because they didn't need the money also to do it. Then there was the topic of bringing the vote to the people. Well, luckily, I'm at Stonewall right now, and I'm taking a few courses, so I'm a little fresh at some of the stuff. And as it is, Rousseau and Lockwood are two people who basically put together the whole concept that we are using right now. But I believe it was Rousseau on representative democracy. I'd like to quote the page and everything, but I just can't at the moment. But he stated that the best democracy is a direct democracy. It is bringing the vote to the people. It is only when the people is too large that you have your elected officials. So that is when we have the issues, the small issues that our elected officials, my friends and members here, would vote on. But when something is so important... I wish I could quote exactly, but Rousseau says, "When something is of such importance that it directs every individual, it is a direct democracy which is the most essential." And that is what we need, is a direct democracy. Have the people vote. Again, I'd just like to say, Young Statesman Mullen, I respect you very much. And I appreciate your trying to be with the popular music. That was a very good quote. It's a very popular song. They played it at all the dance parties at my college. So I thought I'd just say a little quote from "I Believe Your Time." This is Neil Young. This is, I believe, around 60s, 70s. I don't want to put you in the wrong time. It's called...
You were an infant then, Mr. Sato. You probably don't remember it.
I meant the 80s. It was around the 80s. It's Neil Young. It's called "Don't Let It Bring You Down." And in the chorus, he says, "Don't let it bring you down. It's only castles burning," which alludes to the buildings being destroyed. "Don't let it bring you down. It's only castles burning. Just open your mind, and you will come around."
Mr. Lovely, you want to take a shot at following that act?
I was just going to defer to Mr. Ward. God, I have a dog, and I have kids. Thank you for letting me speak. The last time I spoke, I was talking, of course, about the parks. And I really came to this meeting. In fact, some of you know, it might be in a warmer place today, but for the fact that I think we're taking the most important vote tonight in over 100 years in this town. By the way, Ramon has a great jump shot, too, besides everything else. He's a terrific kid, young man. I took a little motivational walk around the high school tonight, and I started in the science wing, the Ann Coghlan Science Wing. And it was wonderful. You look at all those slides that we saw the other night, you've got it right here. About a block over to my left, the Ann Coghlan Science Center, which you should be very proud. It's bright. The lights are inset in the ceiling. You walk around, you really feel like this is a place to learn. It's conducive to education. One of the speakers earlier tonight who recommended a no vote on this proposal talked about the history of quality education in this town. Well, as some of you know, I have a lot of kids who've gone through these schools. But I also have a daughter who is now a teacher in the Tucker School, and she loves the Tucker School. And she loves teaching. And I want to talk to you just a moment about, not the children, because as I think ahead of 180-day school year for those kids, once the new schools are built, I did a little simple arithmetic. Just think about the fact that for somebody starting in grade one, they're going to be able to walk into a new and bright and vibrant building 2,160 times during their educational career here in Milton. What a great thought. But think about the teachers for a moment. It seems to me in the first place that it's a bit ironic, if it were the will of this body, where a two-thirds vote is required, that one-third of this body can prevent a majority, a simple majority of our citizens, from deciding whether it's time to build some new schools. But think about the message that we are sending to our teachers. Now, I'm biased, because I have a daughter who comes home very frequently. She doesn't live here. She lives in South East, because she can't afford to live in Milton. But she comes home, and she's extraordinarily excited about teaching. And every year, we have the Tucker Christmas party at our house. And what a great event that is, seeing all these young and vital, excited young people teaching young children and really happy about it. What message are we going to send to them if we defeat this article? What's the message? The message is, yes, we've always had a great commitment to teaching. We've always had a great commitment to curricula. Look at your teachers. Look at your administrators. Do you think they don't care? Look at the school committee and the hours they put in. You think they don't care? But think about the message that we'll send to these people when we vote no, when we don't even let the opportunity reach the people to say, "Yay." Let's get excited about sending a positive message to the people who teach our kids, to the people who we send and to whom we place our children's trust and growth. Because I'll tell you, it's not a question of whether we're going to get new teachers if we don't approve this proposal. We're going to lose the good ones we have. What will be out there for a message that will attract new, vibrant, excited, motivated young people to teach our kids? If we're not going to be the education town, which we have a chance to do in the new millennium, we're going to be the town that said no to exciting, wonderful places to teach, where learning is encouraged by the environment. So please, if you are in doubt, if you have a shadow of a doubt, please let your constituents decide. I know you've talked to some of your constituents, and I know Jimmy Mullen's talked to a lot of people who said they'll vote yes here and no at the polls. And that is a volitional act that each of them can take. And let them take it. But let's decide tonight that we're going to give our community a chance to take the greatest step that it's taken in 100 years. Let's get excited about the good news that we've heard. Charlie Winchester's committee has done a hell of a job. He's listened to everybody who's wanted to go to see him. And for those who might have missed the opportunity, he's still open to listening. But the fact is, if we don't vote tonight, if I were Charlie Winchester, I'd probably resign, because I don't think we can do any better than we've done. So let's get behind this, let the voters decide, and let's make the teachers know that Milton is the place to teach, and that it's the place we want them to teach. And let's get excited and go on on February 8th and win this thing and do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Ward, town meeting member from Precinct 9.
Can you talk in this office, Mr. Ward?
And to be clear, I speak only as a town meeting member, having again consulted legal counsel, who says that that statute doesn't apply in my capacity as a town meeting member. I wish briefly, and I'm glad we're on the five-minute rule, and obviously go it here, to speak on three subjects. One is the concept of community. Secondly is the concept of the process that you are all engaging in. And third is the word that's been floated around by Mr. Mullen and others in terms of what your responsibility is. Now, we are all members of a community. We do not live as hermits. We all interface. We all interact. And as a result of living in a community, we have a responsibility to that community. That issue is significantly and substantively raised on the issue before you, because it is not a short-term issue. It is an issue of making a decision that relates to a whole future generation, as those who sat in this auditorium or others and were town meeting members had to make decisions that affected our generation and those who followed them in terms of making decisions with respect to building the original schools. And the debate probably was quite similar then as it is now as to whether they could afford it. But they made the tough decision as members of a community, recognizing the need that indeed, while this may be expensive, while we may have to make sacrifices, it is our responsibility to respond to a community need. And what you have heard, may I remind you in the informational session on the first night, is that the need is extraordinary in terms of its impact on the community. A failure to take action is a vote essentially to condemn this community to second-rate education for its children. A vote against this is an act that condemns our students essentially to going to what will become at some point, if not even now, in some of our schools, unsafe, unsanitary essential conditions with respect to the environment they're in. May I remind you that the chair of the school committee stood up and told you that for years, the person that is designated to worry about fire hazards has been warning the school committee that something's got to be done about that high school. Nobody wants to stand up and say, "Look, your kids are going to a fire trap. Hello?" And while the problem is under control now, the reality as explained to you is that over time, and this is a seven-year project. I mean, you know, should have done it seven years ago, but we are where we are, that at some point, okay, this will be an unsafe environment. So the problem is monumental, and everyone gets up and says, "Well, I recognize the need." And then I have heard what I've heard as a... Having served this body as the town moderator, and then as the chairman of the warrant committee, as a town meeting member, there are certain people that get up and say, "Well," like Mr. Mullen, okay, and the town meeting member McNamara, "you know, we should approve a unanimous plan." Has there ever been a unanimous plan? Of course not. Democracy doesn't work that way, and the process doesn't work that way. "Oh, give me one that is only renovation," Mr. Mullen says, and everybody... "Oh, give me one that is only renovation," Mr. Mullen says, "and everybody will support it." Town meeting member McNamara, "oh, you know, if you just do two, I know everybody will get behind that." I question the ability of anybody to get up here and say, "I know what the voters are gonna do." Those voters, by the way, they are our community. Now, with respect to process, it is this town meeting that said, "Look, I want you to appoint a school building committee." And a lot of work, that committee was appointed. Best the moderator could do, I think. And I am told that he spent a lot of time figuring out who to put on that committee. And it is you who said as a matter of process, "I will be guided by that committee," because not one of you has the expertise to analyze this problem. And it is only the members of that committee who met 56 times and countless other meetings with other committees, neighbors, and came up with and presented to you with expert professional help from the architects with the best plan possible.
Mr. Ward, you have one minute.
Okay, thank you, and that's all I need. That has been presented to you, but from day one, the whole point was, and everybody knew in appointing that committee, that it would be subject to an override, that it would go to the community at large for approval. And I consider as a matter of your responsibility that if you truly, even those who are saying no, and I urge you to change your mind, that if you are truly a member of this community and understand the process, and understand, and as you said, recognize the need, that it is your responsibility to accept those results and not say, "Well, you know, one more ball field and I'd be with it, okay? You know, if it was only two, I'd be with it, or I can predict the voters won't do this, therefore come up with some vague nebulous Plan B." The process has produced the best plan possible, and it is your responsibility to send it to the voters. Thank you.
Ms. Palmer, you've got the floor.
Anne Palmer, Precinct 7. I don't usually need a microphone. We should really stop right here. Who can fault or disagree with anything that has just been said? But just a couple of anecdotes. I'm a retired teacher from the Milton Schools, 25 years. I started when the Pierce was clean and cute, and we had lots of room and all that stuff. I taught under the stairs, I taught in that bathroom, that was my office at one point. I've taught in closets, I taught in a huge room at one point, that was wonderful, when we had the ladder state. I've been everywhere. I've done a lot of stuff in the schools. And I used to tell the kids I was six feet tall when I started. I did not have the pleasure of having Ramon in one of my classes, but I did learn some of my trade with Mr. Lovely's kids, the poor things. But anyway, it's time, it's past time, it's way past time to get something done with these schools. And I too am really concerned about what will happen to the staff if we don't show them that we do appreciate where they teach and give them something to teach with and to teach in and to work in. And to the children who we hope will stay in the Milton Schools, because their parents need us a good place to be. So let's get with it.
Good evening. I'm Roger Connor, town meeting member from Precinct 9. I was principal of Milton High School back in the 70s. At that time, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges recommended that the town build a new high school. A good building committee studied this program, studied what had to be done, and they came up with a plan very similar to the plan, the first part of the plan that we have with us tonight. It did include, as was told last night, the closing of Tucker School. When the plan was not accepted by the town, it went to a vote of the town, and I hope you will allow it, this proposal, to go to the vote of a town. Immediately, we had to start to find ways to alter, add on, renovate, patch, do everything that we could to the buildings in order to preserve the school's accreditation. Through the years, we have used every Band-Aid possible to keep an excellent staff doing a good job under very, very difficult situations, working around one renovation after another. These projects required that they be done in such a way that we had the least disruption that we could have. But we couldn't do them in the summer, the summer was too short, so the kids had to come to school with the renovations going on. The students of Milton deserve the best program possible, and that requires the best academic atmosphere. The money spent in patching Milton High School would have more than paid for the school, the new high school, back in the 70s. The problem, we still have it. We have an old building here, we have other old buildings that have received little attention and are in great disrepair. We face the same problem today. It's not going away. You know, as that oil filter guy says, "Pay me now or pay me later." If you pay him later, it's always more. The cost is going to increase with delay. I volunteer my services to the South Shore Elder Services. And as a member of the board of directors of South Shore Elder Services, I am aware of many problems that can help our seniors who are unable to meet the expenses. There are a great many programs that if somebody wants to come and ask me about them, I will get them some answers, I will actually introduce them to some of the people at South Shore who can help them. They can also get answers at the Council on Aging. Our Council on Aging workers do a great job, they are doing the work of more than we have for staff over there. Like Kathy Heffernan said, there is help for the seniors who cannot afford the increase in taxes.
Mr. Carney, have one minute.
Thank you very much. All of us, particularly we seniors, we have to give something back. It's time, as Alice Casey said, for us to give back and to look for something that will be really worthwhile for the seniors, for the generations coming after us. I encourage all of you to vote yes, put it to the voters, and I encourage you to thank this committee for all that they have done. Thank you.
Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Redden, Precinct 2. I'll save speeches for those more eloquent, knowledgeable than I, but a couple of quick questions, if I may. My understanding is that the use of the town farm site requires the approval of the probate court. Is there a contingency if, for some reason, we fail to get it, or if the probate court attaches a value higher than what's anticipated?
I can answer the first question. There is not a contingency, because we're not permitted by law to do it, but the language of the recommendation is generic enough to allow the transfer of other town-owned land if such is identified and approved. But the plan right now is to seek that approval from the court. For the second question, I defer to either Mr. McCarthy or Mr. Winchester, because I believe there is a contingency built into the appropriation, but I would ask either one of those gentlemen to answer the specific question. Mr. Winchester, you're recognized.
Well, the appraisal, which the Attorney General has now announced, or the Attorney General's office has now announced that they support, was for $615,000. The article carries a number of $1 million on the chance that a court might assess a higher value, but I think that's adequate.
Thank you.
Sir, I'd just add to that answer two points. Number one, the court approval is from either the State Supreme Judicial Court, the State Superior Court, or the probate court. Most often, that goes to the probate court, but you have the option of going to any of the three. The reason they go most often to the probate court is that the court that most commonly deals with trusts. And to elaborate on Mr. Winchester's answer, the ultimate decision is in the court. However, the Attorney General by statute is the custodian of the public trust, and in a case like this where a town holds land given to under a will under trust, the Attorney General is a potty to any such court case. And although the final decision is for the court and only for the court, the support of the Attorney General is almost a sine qua non. We were told last week that we have the support of the Attorney General for that appraisal figure of $615,000. It doesn't mean that that's what the court will decide, but it is an absolutely important step, because without the support of the Attorney General, that issue would be much, much more difficult.
Thank you.
Ms. Coates, you're recognized.
My name is Helen Coats. I'm a town meeting member of Precinct 5, and I live in the same precinct as Mr. Mullen does. However, I've received from my neighbors and the residents there the total opposite to the ones expressed by Mr. Mullen this evening. I may even have to check my own records when I get home to make sure that I do in fact live in Precinct 5. I am personally extremely grateful to all the supporters involved in this project for their unwavering commitment and unbelievable work to date on this historic undertaking. And I am very impressed with the presentations and documentation received to date. I am very proud to be part of history in the making. As an expatriate who did not go to school in the United States, I know firsthand what it's like to be on either end of the wrangling associated with crummy schools. In infant school, we had less than 15 children in a classroom with one teacher and two assistants, and our school was new. In junior school, the capacity in the classrooms was similar, with often a foreign teaching assistant to help out. Again, it was a modern school. Then I entered comprehensive school, or high school as it's known on this side of the puddle. That's where my problems began. With a high student-to-teacher ratio and dilapidated schools, my grades suffered tremendously. We did not have the luxury of having the option to move to another town. We plain didn't have the money. I left comprehensive school in 1975. I felt that I still had to overcome the difficulties of recovering from the after-effects of overcrowded classrooms and bathrooms that were outdoors. We had to utilize temporary buildings in a different part of town for the majority of the term due to increased enrollment caused in part by a mini baby boom. Another factor was the relocation and incorporation of a portion of another junior school that had previously been located on a disused airfield that was being revamped. We need to get rid of the bunker mentality and get our heads out of the sand. Yes, I have no children in our schools, but I value my home and my property values, and we owe it to the kids to give them the very best. In addition, you never know how your own circumstances may change in the future. With family living aboard, who knows what may happen that may force me to sell my home, and that will be much harder with crummy schools. I feel comfortable in going forward on this project and trust the judgments of these committees. I know how I feel in my heart. The safety of the students and parents and the staff are compromised right now, and it will only get worse. It's a no-brainer. If these improvements do not take place, I for one will be utilizing the services of Mr. DeWolfe in assisting me in finding a new home, and it won't be in Milton. It can't be in Milton. We need safe schools. I urge you to please vote yes on this article, and let's get cracking. Let's move forward to the next exciting phase, which is the development of our new schools. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan, before I recognize you, I think I owe the previous speaker a further answer, because as I recall, part of the question was, what if the approval of transfer of the town farm property was not obtained? What I neglected to tell town meeting was, that was one of the questions that we had been presenting to the Attorney General's office, and what they also told us last week was, they approve of the concept of transfer of care, custody, and control of the 24-acre portion of the town farm property to the school department for school purposes. Again, it's a decision for the court, but the Attorney General's Public Charities Division has told your town that they support that proposal. Ms. Sullivan.
Good evening. I wish I was an attorney tonight, because they certainly do have a way of expressing themselves. Step up to it. Good evening. Two years ago, at town meeting...
Ms. Sullivan, would you please identify yourself in your precinct, please?
...Gates Sullivan, Precinct 10. Two years ago, at town meeting, a team of four from Tappan and Associates presented to you their demographic and needs assessment study of the Milton Public Schools. The school committee had unanimously voted option 6. A new high school at Guile Road, because the site was large enough for a high school, for parking, and that is where the fields were located for our high school athletes. The middle school would relocate to the high school and utilize the new science wing. Collicott and Cunningham would be renovated, the addition of Collicott and a connector between the two schools. The Tucker School would be renovated with a reduced enrollment at the school. The state does have guidelines for acreage for schools, but obviously, there are many cities and towns in the Commonwealth that cannot meet these guidelines and receive a waiver and also qualify for reimbursement. The Glover School would have been a large elementary school. There definitely would have been a second floor added to that school. That plan addressed school needs using existing sites. Redistricting the Tucker population to Glover would have been an issue for the administration and school committee to address. You are voting for a plan that includes a site that is questionable in the cost and ownership. Extraordinary costs are not automatically reimbursed. Extraordinary costs associated with new site include, or could include, a long access road into the site, buildability problems like a ledge, clearing costs, bringing utilities to the site, to name a few. If this plan is approved by the voters and the farm site is not approved, you, town meeting members, will or could in the future be voting on an eminent domain article. There are only two pieces of property for an elementary school to be built in this town, the Copeland property on Randolph Ave and Cunningham Park. The infamous Jim Anderson viewed the Copeland property three years ago and said it would be perfect for an elementary school. The Copeland family has been very generous to the schools. Microscopes for this high school, kilns for the art department, lights at Brooksfield, to name a few of their donations. You should know tonight what the backup plan is to the farm site. It's been heartwarming to hear everyone's concerns for special ed students. My child that graduated last year hit an IEP. He went to a research... He went to a resource room at Collicott for extra help with reading in a room that had been a storage closet. I helped the parents of special ed parents start a parent advisory committee. When I attended their meeting in October and handed out the ed specs and preliminary plans, it was the first time the director of special ed had seen the plans for the elementary schools. I can tell you that these parents are not happy with the space that has been allocated to special ed. I could give you many, many examples of why this plan is not a comprehensive plan. The school committee warrant committee and selectmen have not done their job regarding the operational side of this plan. Forecasting only two teachers a year for the next five years is inaccurate. At our last school committee meeting, the request for teachers from the high school principal was 11. The middle school, 6, and I'm not sure what the elementary was, but I remember that one elementary school is again requesting a full-time nurse. The elementary principal's requested over $250,000 for instructional equipment. A high school principal requested almost half a million dollars in textbooks. Third-year IMP math students still do not have books, and this is the fifth year of this program. Fourth-year Spanish students are using third-year Spanish books. In the 13 years that my children have been in the Milton Public Schools, the elementary children have never had a science or a social studies book. This is a piece of paper that a math class at the middle school used to take a quiz. I also have questions about the money that has been paid to DRA. We should, at this point in time, have a feasibility study, an in-depth study with extensive engineering reports, options for the school facilities, and a detailed analysis of the options. The building committee members who wrote the contract with DRA decided not to have an extensive engineering report, not to use a cost estimator or other consultants. A cost estimator would have cost about $30,000. Many school districts that successfully passed overrides met periodically with the state as the feasibility study, and their plans progressed to verify funding eligibility.
Ms. Sullivan, you have one minute.
Well, if I have one minute, I will have to go right into the process of selecting the architect. Tappahannen was going to continue contingent upon an independent evaluator. Somehow, the report that was sent from Milton called the Tappahannen report a feasibility study. Tappahannen read the review of this evaluation and wrote a letter explaining that their study was a demographic and needs assessment study. The independent evaluator then received a second report from Milton to review with the correct title of the report. So in other words, the report was sent with, I guess, two different titles to it. The independent evaluator that was selected has a relationship with the Milton Public Schools. The firm he worked for received over $200,000 from 1996 to early 1998 for developing design or schematic plans for boilers, roofs, and so on. He was also involved in the bid process and overseeing work that was done under capital improvements. And I would have brought this forward earlier, but I didn't find out about this until before Christmas. I've served almost six years on the school committee. When my children were in Collicott, I joined the PTO. I helped raise money for books for the library, computers, wish list items for teachers. I was a PTO president, a member of the site council. I raised money for after-school programs at Pierce, the boosters, and so on. I've always been committed to the children in our schools, and I resent being placed in this position, having to vote for an all-or-nothing plan. I know this plan is flawed. I know the process was flawed. I know inaccurate information has been given to you. And it pains me to have to say that I will vote against this plan because I know it is not the best plan for our children, our teachers, or our community. Thank you.
It's my sense that town meeting is ready to vote. What I would propose to do is to have as your two final speakers, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to present the position of the Board of Selectmen and the chairman of the Warrant Committee. Sir, did you wish to be recognized?
I wanted to hear from the selectmen, and I was afraid that we were about to do something without a hearing.
Ms. Agostino, you're recognized first, and then I will-- Does any other member of the Board of Selectmen wish to speak before Mr. Neely?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I did ask you for this opportunity this evening, previously to the call for the question just now. Many of you know me only from turning on the TV set, but I have three children, one in college, one going to college, and one who's a seventh grader at the Pierce Middle School. And over the last 18 years, I was in the same position many of you were in, in the back of the room, working to build safer schools, working to assist the teachers in any way I could, so I know exactly how you feel tonight. And-- Oops, I lost a few seconds there. But I've always taught my children to do their homework, and those of you who intimately do know me know I do my homework. This project is a pass or fail. In school, when you take a pass or fail course, you have to really do your homework. My sophomore in college just learned that. We have heard so many people speak tonight that we indeed appreciate the work the friends of the schools have done to make all of Milton unanimous that something must be done. I firmly believe that it would be unanimous if it were not for the money question. The money question. I have to thank Mr. Winchester for appointing me when I certainly had no desire to be appointed to the town's Warrant Committee. My baby was only two years old. The letter arrived, and I called up Mr. Mullen, and I said, "There's been a mistake. No one's asked me to go on the Warrant Committee." Well, I spent four years there, and I ask you to think of the operating and capital cost as an hourglass. The hourglass laying on its side, let's not tip it either way too strongly. We've already been there in the 80s when we stole from our capital funds to help our operating problems. I'd also like to recognize and thank the town treasurer, Kevin Sorji. I have a slogan I keep in my book, and I don't know who the writer was. It says, "Management is doing things right, but leadership is doing the right thing." Lisa Dickinson has been quoted, a lot of officials have been quoted, and I did speak to her today while driving around town and walking, so I only had my Samuel L. Lewis' flyer to write on. She pointed out to me that, yes, she did say debt is good back in 1995, four years ago, but what she was referring to was the current debt level, that for the town of Milton, the debt level we were carrying was good. Yes, she did say operating overrides are good, but she said it in the context of looking at the history of the operating overrides. As someone with a business that deals with other people's money all the time, I am very conscientious about how I spend it. And looking at the history of the overrides is why I sent each town meeting member a letter to review completely their options. Well, I know that we're taking the vote tonight, and I know that just today I received the school building committee's information on our crumbling buildings, and I don't have the time to read it all to you, but I will tell you that it was an engineer's report, not a structural engineer's report, so I don't want anyone to feel that our buildings are falling down. These will be available for anyone interested. I was certainly surprised to read that the high school is performing satisfactorily, just like the Tucker School. I was surprised to read, after hearing that Mr. Anderson said the floors are pretty bouncy, that the Collicott School Foundation is satisfactory. Because I have been doubted so many times in the past, I write my questions down, and I get it in writing, so if anyone has any questions over the next four weeks, please give me a call, and I'll share my wealth of information with you. The voters in '72 were given the opportunity. They said no. Dead time. Nothing has happened since '72. My concern is that on February 8th, we are taking a gamble, that we are sacrificing our children's education because the June 21st deadline is a deadline for this year that will add so many schools in front of our schools. So on February 9th, Milton will wake up, where we have passed or failed our responsibility to our children. Someone was quoted in the Boston Globe, a friend of mine, has said, "It's not an inexpensive proposal." I'd like to add to that, and it's more expensive than you know, especially to our children and to our teachers who I thank for bringing their children's homework here tonight to collect. I've heard some great stories over the many years that I've been very, very involved in the schools. I'd also like to ask the current moderator, who seems to really like his new job, if it wouldn't be possible, since the Board of Selectmen is meeting tonight, and some of the very concerns that have come up might possibly be further addressed prior to the town vote, for the Board of Selectmen to have a few minutes to discuss establishing a cost estimating committee over the next few days that could take just a few days. I've heard several people in the audience with differing opinions say that they'd like to do just that, to have an independent committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen to give a report prior. And I'd also like to ask the school committee to seriously, if it means meeting more than once a week, to seriously give us the operating budget. I know you've got a deadline anyways, but I think the parents and the children deserve the operating budget before the February 8th. I thank everyone for their patience, and as my new friend Donna Robinson said, actually, my daughter and her daughter have also become new friends, it's easy to disagree because we all have opinions, but it's not very nice to hurt people. So please, let's have respect for each other. Thank you.
Mrs. McCaffrey, to the--
A lot has happened since 1972, when that boat was lost. We heard from Roger Connor. We know that the high school went through all kinds of stopgap makeshift measures, and it's managed. And the other schools have done the same. Tucker School had an addition. It's not been a very good addition. The school's never had an auditorium since 1978, when those changes were made. All of the schools are much older. That's not really the critical issue. Here in Milton, we've been looking at whether or not to add to our schools and renovate and expand since the 1960s, which is really amazing. That's when I graduated from high school, and it's a long time ago. What's happened is that we've had fluctuations in population, and at some of the times that these school projects were proposed, the population just wasn't going quite the right way. People were cautious. Milton is a very cautious conservative community, and I think that's a good thing. And in some cases, the electorate decided they didn't want to take the big step. And sometimes, you know, we've gotten away with it really up until now because until about 10 years ago, at least during the 1980s, the trend in the town was for school population to be going down. So even though we had inadequate spaces and old schools, we were able to manage. What's different now is that we have had a 10-year population trend, and it has filled up every nook and cranny in our schools. So the driving force behind the proposal that's before us today is school population, and it's been with us for a while. We're full. We've been full for a long time. We're going to get a little bit fuller, and meanwhile, our old schools, our makeshift spaces are getting worse and worse. Since the 1970s, the school department has also been calling our attention to the fact that teaching methods have changed, and schoolroom spaces need to be designed differently. But again, without the critical population push, the town really hasn't been able to make the decision to go forward and to spend money on new schools. We have the population now, and that's why we're considering this issue today and for the last three days at this town meeting. We've finally come to the point where we really do have to do some major changes. Now, since I was elected in May as a selectman, and somewhat before then, but particularly since then, I've spent a lot of time looking at this proposal. And I have not been-- I was not convinced in the beginning necessarily that we needed to do the project as a whole project. Many of the issues that have been discussed at this town meeting, I've also thought about and I've also had doubts about. My major doubts have been resolved and have been answered. And I really feel that the question boils down to two or three compelling issues. One is, we have to repair our schools anyway. We have to keep them safe. We have to repair major systems. We've had two different estimates done of what that could cost, and they are truly substantial estimates, $30 million, $40 million. That type of repair work has to be bonded, just like this project does. But for simple repairs, you don't get state reimbursement of 61%. So the cost comes very close to the cost of doing this project to the town. That's probably been the most convincing fact in all this analysis that we've done for me. But people say, you know, well, you know, "We're not going to do that. We're not going to just repair the schools. That would be a waste of money." I think that's the whole point of our discussion. It would be a waste of money. We shouldn't do it. We need to do this building project. To repeat a point that's been made a number of times, it's also important for us to get in line behind the other towns and cities in Massachusetts that are already on the list for these projects. It's not so much a question of whether the reimbursement rate will change, although I think that's a factor that we have to consider. It's a question of where are we on these lists? There are a lot of towns and cities ahead of us, and there will be a lot more ahead of us if we don't get an application in in June. As far as the major aspects of this project go, I personally have spent a long time looking at every element of the proposal. I've attended each meeting, each neighborhood meeting. I've listened to the questions. I've had questions myself that I've posed, and as somebody has remarked, everyone can find something that they don't like about the plan, just about. But a small thing that you don't like about the plan is not a reason to turn this proposal down at this point, and I don't think it's a reason to vote against it at the polls either. The overall plan is a sound one. It's been very carefully worked out. At this stage, the preliminary specification stage, we have enough information to make a judgment. The arguments I've presented are equally compelling for the individual taxpayer as they are for the town. This is a sound investment for the town. It's also a sound investment for the taxpayer. Why? Because we're going to pay increased taxes to pay for the repair of our schools. We're going to pay increased taxes to pay for these new schools that will provide us with great educational spaces and will spur our students on to be the great students that we want them to be, to get those great test scores, if that's what you're worried about, and to inspire our teachers to do the best job they possibly can. And I think we've seen that happening in the science program at the high school because of the new science wing, and we will see it throughout our school system if we are able to accomplish this proposal. Each of us has a choice here. We can vote for the proposal. We can invest in the schools. We can give the system a huge shot in the arm, or we can continue the way we have. We can make piecemeal repairs. We can struggle to find stopgap ways to accommodate enrollment and pay a lot for the privilege of doing that. I will always continue to support the operating budget of the schools. I'll do it this year. I've done it for all the years that I've lived in Milton. That's 22 years. The only-- The only override, by the way, that I will not support is an override just to repair these deteriorating school buildings. So please, join me in voting yes.
Mr. Bailey, I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm pleased to report that the majority of the Board of Selectmen are in favor of this article. I hope you bear with me, because I think a lot of the key points were made. We're in summation here after three long nights of hard work. Thank you. The points are that tonight, we have received and are debating solutions. We have solutions to two major problems. We've heard the questions, we have the solutions. The solutions are to overcrowding throughout the entire system. The solutions are to obsolete facilities, even if there had been maintenance, or talking facilities that are over 75 years old. I clearly join in with many in believing that it is more expensive to delay or defer the projects into the future. The program is scheduled to be finished on a phased-in basis now, as it is, in 2006. So it's not going to be done in one day. To keep putting this off is simply going to delay the overall benefit to the town and to add to the additional costs. Clearly, the 61% reimbursement is an issue. There is nothing that is in concrete or safe throughout the years ahead. I think it makes good sense to look at that as a risk to be considered. I'm clearly impressed by the fact that many of the people who are professional real estate people, as Mr. DeWolff, are correct that real estate is an investment, and I believe this is a serious improvement potentially in the value of your investment, or in the converse, it's a protection to the benefit of your investment. We're talking about the average cost that was described as $8,200, which is an impact of less than 3.5% on your investment. So the cost over the 25 years is, you're talking about a 3.5% cost to maintain or improve your investment over the life of 25 years. $8,200 sounds like a lot of money, but 3.5%, when you look at what the banks are paying, and when you look at what other places are paying, it seems to me you ought to consider a 3.5% investment is not an expensive proposition over 25 years. Clearly, as longtime resident and a lot of boards, a lot of the questions you get from people about the town, whether you live in the town or outside the town, the two major issues that I hear are public safety and schools. The public safety area, I think, has done a very good job. I think we have excellent forces, both the police and fire, and we've done a great job in that. The schools, this is an opportunity to make an investment in improvement, and I think critically, those are two areas for the investment side. I don't think I really need to go on much further on the investment side. I think that's been covered adequately. In terms of the overall system, you know, I appreciate the history of the town, but I think it gets to the point, you can't be romantic too much about the past. And I think you really have to go ahead and make the investment. So I think that in general, and I hate to conclude, but I just really think there's been a long debate. I've had a family go through the schools for many years, and I think you have a situation where my mother started in the Tucker School in 1924, and I don't think that you should get romantic about the schools that have existed over the last 75 years. I went to a Pierce School in '54. My children have gone through the system. The rooms that I walk past today, that were closets in 1962, are now the classrooms for my daughter in Latin class at the Pierce School. That was a janitorial closet. All three children might have been in the portable classrooms at the Glover School. Those portable classrooms should not be there presently. Those are not romantic classrooms. The high school, my mother went to the Central Junior High School in 1931, and that school needs to be replaced. 1931, the Central Junior High School was here. So I just think in conclusion, that it's time to move on and get on with this project, and let's vote the question. And just one final thing, I don't believe that the motion that's presented to the selectman by Mrs. Agostino is the right thing to consider at this point. The board has yet to deliberate. We'll do that in one moment. But the issue is to do nothing is a gamble. The gamble is academically to the students, financially because of the higher costs, the state reimbursement formula, the renovation costs, and the additional costs for portable classrooms. So I think the gamble is doing nothing. I think we ought to get on with it, and we will vote as selectmen in one minute and report back, and we'll see where we stand on this so-called Cost Analysis Committee, which I consider nothing more than another stall.
Before I recognize Mr. McCarthy, I was asked to read two questions by Selectman Agostino. The first question was to the Board of Selectmen. As I understand the question is, is, will the Board appoint a cost estimate committee by February 4, 2000? That's the issue Mr. Neely just referred to. Her second question is directed to the school committee. Will they have their budget by February 4, 2000? I refer that question to the committee if they see fit to answer it tonight. Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've had three nights of very extensive debate on this subject, and as arduous as it has been on all of us, and on, in particular, on my committee, I'm glad. Because this is the single largest issue this town will face in the foreseeable future. And I think we've done it justice in coming into this hall in each of the last three evenings and discussing it as extensively and thoroughly and as passionately as we all have. We don't have much more to add, so I'll draw the conclusion that we drew for you in the warrant booklet. The town of Milton is at a crossroads. Our school buildings have become educationally unsuitable, structurally unsound, and financially burdensome. They are showing the results of years of hard use and neglect. They are all over capacity due to explosive enrollment growth over the past 15 years. The demographic studies commissioned by the School Building Committee project that if nothing is done, they will become even more crowded, even more strained. The education that the town provides for its children will inevitably suffer as a result. Since a good school system is one of the most important determinants of a community's property values, the investment that each homeowner has in his or her property would be at risk. If the town rejects the school building plan, we will face up to a $40 million cost over 25 years to simply maintain the status quo and implement the undesirable alternative of modular classrooms to provide additional space. By and large, our buildings will remain old and obsolete. The warrant committee believes that spending tax dollars in this manner is not a wise investment. We therefore urge town meeting approval of Article 4 as the best possible return on the town's investment in its school buildings. Thank you.
Town meeting members, two town meeting members have asked me the same question, namely, to read what you are voting on, and I don't consider that a frivolous question. I know the hour is late, but I also know the subject matter is extremely complex. Obviously, we've spent almost three nights talking about this. And I want to be sure that every town meeting member is sure about what he or she is being asked to vote upon. Therefore, I'd ask you to turn to page 56 of the warrant book, and I'd ask your indulgence while I read the recommendation. The motion before town meeting is the recommendation of the warrant committee that appears on page 56 and ends on page 58. But given the fact that at least two town meeting members have expressed that concern to me, I will honor that request and read it and beg your indulgence. The motion before town meeting is as follows. That the town appropriate the sum of $114,754,000 for the purposes of this article. That the town vote to authorize the School Building Committee, appointed pursuant to the vote of the 1998 Annual Town Meeting under Article 50, to employ the services of architects and other professional consultants to prepare detailed plan specifications and working drawings and other necessary documents for the school construction projects described below, and work incidental and related thereto, and including partial or complete demolition of existing structures as noted. A. Construction and equipping and furnishing of a new high school at the site of Pierce Middle School and demolition of the existing Pierce Middle School. B. Repair, renovation, remodeling, equipping, and furnishing of Milton High School and construction and equipping and furnishing of an addition to Milton High School for conversion to a middle school and partial demolition of the existing Milton High School. C. Construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new Melt Elementary School on land at the town farm site off Hunkwood Road and Governor Stoughton Lane, which town farm site is shown on Town of Milton assesses maps as Map K Block 6 Lot 2. D. Repair, renovation, remodeling, equipping, and furnishing of Cunningham School and construction, equipping, and furnishing of an addition to Cunningham School and construction, equipping, and furnishing of a new collar cart school connected to Cunningham School by a connector having shared facilities and demolition of the existing collar cart school and partial demolition of the existing Cunningham School and repair, renovation, remodeling, equipping, and furnishing of Glover School and construction, equipping, and furnishing of an addition to Glover School and partial demolition of the existing Glover School. And further, that the town authorize the School Building Committee to seek bids and award contracts for the foregoing projects and to supervise said projects and to employ the services of architects and project managers and other professional consultants in connection therewith. And the town vote, and that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and other boards, commissions, or committees of the town to transfer one or more parcels of the town-owned land under their jurisdiction to the school department for school purposes, including without limitation the aforementioned land at the town farm site, whether by sale, lease, or otherwise. And that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to obtain any court approval, legislative approval, agency approval, or other approval necessary to accomplish the purposes set forth in this article. And that the town vote to authorize its boards, commissions, and committees, including without limitation the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the school building committee, to apply for state and/or federal funds to assist and/or reimburse the town in connection with any of the foregoing. And that the town vote to authorize the moderator to appoint four additional members to the School Building Committee, thereby increasing its membership to 13 members. And that to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to sell and issue bonds or notes of the town, aggregating not more than $114,754,000 in principal amount pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Sections 7 Subsection 3 and 7 Subsection 3A of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, and Chapter 645 of the Acts and Reserves of 1948 as amended, and any other applicable law. The Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the School Building Committee are hereby authorized to apply for grants, gifts, or donations for the purposes of this article from federal, state, or private sources. The Board of Selectmen is authorized to accept such grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town. The amount of such gifts or donations shall reduce the amount to be borrowed by the town under the authorization conferred by this article. Is, is every town meeting member able to hear me, or is there too much noise back Is the noise from the outside of the hall or the inside of the hall? Would town meeting please come to order? And would people please respect the integrity of this process by not talking inside the hall? And if you wish to talk outside the hall, would you please not talk in the vicinity of the door? We're ready to vote, and this is the most important part of the night, to make sure that the town meeting members read, know, and understand what they're voting upon. Thank you. Said appropriation is contingent upon passage by the voters of Milton of a referendum question under Chapter 59, Section 21 CK of the Massachusetts General Laws, which exempts from the provisions of Proposition 2.5, so-called, the amount required to pay for the bond or bonds issued for the purposes of this article. Expenditure of money under said appropriation is subject to the condition that not more than $4 million shall be borrowed or expended under this article until the Town of Milton receives notice that the Town of Milton's application for a school construction grant or grants for one or more of the foregoing school construction projects has been accepted for placement on a Commonwealth of Massachusetts School Building Assistance Priority List or other similar list, in which event funds may be borrowed or expended under this article for those of the foregoing school construction projects which are accepted for placement on such a priority list or other similar list. Does any town meeting member have any question about the motion that is before the assembly and what you are being asked to vote upon tonight? The procedure I would like to follow is, given the importance of this issue, to have the vote counted by tellers. I don't feel comfortable with doing a voice vote. I think it would lead to a standing count anyway. What I would ask is if we are ready to vote, number one, only town meeting members seat in the forward part of the hall. Number two, any town meeting member who wishes to be counted must be seated in the forward section. If you are not seated in the section between the tables and the stage, your vote will not be counted. Would the tellers please get ready for Section 1, Philip Driscoll and Joseph Cunningham, Jr.? For Section 2, Harry S. Tomofsky and Joanne Stanley. Section 3, Virginia Donahue King and Laura Cahill. Are those tellers present? Is town meeting ready to vote?
Yes.
Are the tellers ready to? Yes. Section 2 will count the stage and the selectmen's table and the warrant committee table. Thank you. But all those in favor of the recommendation under Article 4, please indicate their approval by raising their hands.
Stand.
Stand and raise the hands. Thank you. All those in favor of Article 4, please stand and raise your hands. Remain standing and keep your hands raised until the tellers inform us that they have taken account. Thank you.
Notice how we all put up our right hands.
Everybody puts up their right hand. Why? Why don't we put up? No, but everybody has her, has her right hand up, right? Do we see any left hands up? Do we see any left hands up?
It's a right-handed... Are you going to be...
Buddy? Are you looking at...
Buddy? Charlie, here he is. He's got to go over here to carry on his table. Buddy here? Buddy, buddy, come on. Harry, Harry, come on.
We've tortured enough to get our yes votes.
You're annoying. You're annoying.
Yeah, we're just...
We're just...
We're just...
Yeah.
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 Buddy, there you are.
Charlie, here he is. He's got to go over here to carry on his table. Buddy here? Buddy, buddy, come on. Harry, Harry, come on.
Oh, God.
We've tortured enough to get our yes votes.
You're annoying.
You're annoying.
You're annoying.
Yeah, we're just...
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 More than adequate and a athletic facility that is often called a weight room. It's a wonderful opportunity for the town of Milton to endorse this, this field house, and I'll tell you why. Because it is probably the only time that we're going to have the opportunity to have a $4 million athletic facility that will be a community facility, a facility that will serve the entire community, and for us to pay less than that, that $4 million. In fact, our burden would be $1.75 million. That's what our burden would be. What does that boil down to, to the average taxpayer for a $261,000 home? It actually boils down to $26.70 at the peak of the tax impact. Okay? Now, we're talking a lot of money for the building project itself. Now, we're talking a community facility, a facility that can draw together this town, that can be used by all of the town, a facility that every single sport in Milton, in the Milton schools, can practice indoors. It's an opportunity that I really hope you don't just say, "Oh, and that too? You're gonna throw on that one too?" We now have the opportunity to have the state pay 61% of our opportunity to have this field house, to have this community center where elderly can take advantage of it, where the youth can take advantage of it, where the middle-aged people can take advantage of it, day and night, where sports and athletic events can take place. So, please consider this very seriously when you take your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Winchester, you're recognized.
The hour is late, and I'm not gonna take much time on this. Susan Kiernan, I think, has just said most of what I would say anyway. The question is, of course, whether to include the field house at the high school, which you've just voted, rather than a standard gymnasium concept. And our committee strongly supports this. I think, I'd like to just project a couple of slides, because they weren't shown the other day. When we started looking at field houses, which was during the summer, we broached the subject with Jim Anderson of the School Building Assistance Group, and he strongly recommended that we consider this. He said many, many communities that are building high schools are, in fact, building field houses because of the, not only because of the athletic facilities of the high school and availability for student athletes for track and basketball and indoor practice for football and baseball in bad weather, but as Susan mentioned, as community resource for after-school programs for residents of all ages who may, particularly elderly, may choose to walk the track early in the morning rather than go to Salt Shore Plaza, as many do, for the walk in the mall for exercise. So, it's a, it's a great possibility, but I think most people don't really know what one is, and we didn't show it Monday night. And I'd like to just project a slide, DRA has of one that was done up in Gloucester when they designed the renovation of Gloucester High School. It's, is, that's, that's the view that I think is perhaps most instructive. That one is laid out with a game basketball court in the center, the 11th of a mile track around the edges, and as I mentioned Monday night, the reason for that size track, 11th of a mile, is it's the smallest track that doesn't require banked turns. That is what allows the use of basketball courts at either end. If we could just show the first floor, Jeff's plan on the, that we showed Monday night. This is the layout of the first floor of the, of the new high school, and the track is on the upper left, the field house. And as, as laid out here, there are four basketball courts, the two end ones overlapping the track, so if the track were in use, you wouldn't use those for basketball. But this facility is very significant, particularly for high school athletes who, and track programs today literally use high school corridors, and would have to in this school also, for training, doing hurdles, that sort of thing, in the corridor, which is not exactly safe for either them or for any pedestrians coming along. And if you want to talk about wear and tear, I think that's not exactly a desirable thing. In any event, we strongly support it, and we recommend its approval. Thank you.
Mr. Jeffries, you're recognized.
Mr. Moderator, David Jeffries, Precinct 5. Is this one? Mr. David Jeffries, Precinct 5. I would just like to ask this question to be assured and make sure everyone else is so assured, that there will be, when, when, if this is passed and we have the vote, there will be two questions on the ballot. This will be voted as a separate question from the main project.
Yes, sir. The, there will be, if both, if this article is passed, it will be the subject of a separate ballot question in February.
Thank you very much. I want to say that I support this wholeheartedly. I think it will tie Milton together in a way that nothing else has ever done. Thank you.
Can we recognize them?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Kelly, Precinct 8, and I don't want to outweigh my welcome with this microphone, but I have a few questions. The first is, if we have estimated as a town that it will take $4 million to do the plans in architectural drawings and whatever's necessary to submit this, the, what would be considered five schools to the state, why are we asking for $250,000 to add this addition? That would be my first question. My second question is, is there a net gain or a net decrease in the cost of the original high school in Article 4 as a result of adding this particular structure? And then the third, my final comment would be, I think it's estimated that an average homeowner would pay $12.40, $12.40 a year for the next 25 years. I guess I would try to present that, that $12.40 might be better spent on books and materials. Thank you.
Mr. Winchester? Do you reckon?
We'll try. It was, Ms. Kelly, could you hang on in the event we need to repeat any of the questions? As I understood, the first question was, why was the dollar figure $250,000 for this article vis-à-vis the $4 million figure for Article 4?
It was applying the same percentage, I believe, as I recall how that number was selected, same percentage of the total price as an architectural estimate for the project. I can't work it out for you right now.
Okay, let me just ask this, thank you for the ability to clarify. So, what we're saying to the town is, if you-
Ms. Kelly, you have to-
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Request to be recognized as a moderator. I know it's late, but you're recognized, uh-
Thank you very much. So, essentially, what we're saying to the voters is, in order to do this entire project, if both Articles 4 and 5 are approved, that it will cost $4.25 million, or whatever. Add those two, the $4 million and the $250,000, to come up with what this final plan will cost, to just get to the, to the state. Is that correct?
Yes. Bear in mind that in that $4 million, of course, is the land acquisition cost for the town farm as well.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. Okay. And then the second question?
Ms. Kelly, would you repeat the second question? It had to do, would be there a net gain for the high school if this project goes forward, the field house project? Would you clarify that, please?
Sure. There is an original, in the original drawing, it's Article 4 for the high school. It already has, what would be proposed, a gym, and it's already square footage in that. So, I guess my assumption is that that cost would decrease and this would be added to it. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes. The, the added $4 million is a net change.
Net change. Okay. Thank you.
And, Ms. Kelly, was there a third question about the cost of the average homeowner, or was that a comment you had made? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winchester. Does anyone else wish to be heard on the subject matter of Article 5? Mr. McCarthy, do you do? All right. Mr. Neely, you're recognized.
The majority of the board of selectmen are in favor of this article.
Is it, I will read the recommendation for Article 5, if that is town meeting's wish, but if town meeting feels and understands the subject matter of Article 5, I will not. So, I'm just asking for the sense of town meeting. Is there any town meeting member who does not understand the subject matter of Article 5 and would like me to read the vote? I'd be happy to, because again, I do not want any town meeting member feels they do not, he or she does not understand what he or she is being asked to vote upon. All right. With, since it's a two, I'm sorry, was, uh, wait. Would the tellers, again, since it's a two-thirds vote, I will have the vote counted. Would the tellers take their positions? Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Cunningham for Precinct 1, Mr. Tonofsky and Ms. Stanley for Precinct 2, and Ms. King and Mr. Cahill for Precinct 3, please. Would all those in favor of the warrant committee recommendation on Article 5, which appears Would the voters in Section 3 please stand? The tellers have indicated they need to take the count again in Section 3. All those in Section 3 in favor of the recommendation in Article 5, please stand. Town meeting members in Section 1 and 2 may sit down. The tellers have indicated they've completed the count. Section 3, please remain standing. Town meeting members in Section 3, thank you. The vote is complete. Would all those, would all those opposed to the warrant committee recommendation for Section 3 is complete. Thank you. Town meeting members may sit down. Complete. Section 2 is complete. Thank you. Section 1 is complete. Would the tellers in Section 1 please report the vote?
Yes, 48, no, 2.
Yes, 48, no, 2?
Correct.
Thank you. Section 2, please?
Yes, 91, 10, no.
Yes, 91, no, 10?
Yes.
Section 3, please?
54, yes, 7, no.
As the vote is 193 in favor, 19 against, Article 5 passes by a two-thirds vote. Can I beg your indulgence for a minute, please? I just want to be on record as saying, I think the circumstances under which I had to serve in this job are beneath contempt, both because of the subject matter of the issue, the manner in which it was brought, the timing in which it was brought, and the absolute benevolence displayed by that. I wish it had, we had been able to rectify the situation. The timing in which it was brought to my attention on Tuesday did not allow that. I don't know how to express my feelings to Rick Ward, other than to say, it is professionally insulting to him to have to deal with this. I thought the manner he dealt with it was totally classy and professional. And to those who would say that we ought to work together and practice civility, I can't think of a better place to start than to avoid nonsense like that. Thank you very much for the patience and courtesy you displayed to me as I bumbled
Thank you very much, John, for serving as moderator pro tem. And I just want to say that, as hard as we all work to be good at what we do, as you get older, and I am getting older, you always learn that, that, you know, that there's somebody actually better out there to do what you're trying to do. And so, at this point in my career as town moderator, I will be consistently reminded that there is at least one person who can do this job much better than I can, much and all, as you well know, that I think that I at least tried to do my best. We are going to finish this town meeting tonight. And the next article is Article 6, which is on pages 61 and 62. Yes, you recognize Martin.
I think the moderator's trans-
Yes.
I think that the moderator's-
I think-
Oh.
Nice to know I think. I think this is a very dangerous precedent that has just happened with this having to transfer the moderator. Are we now going to have to go into the personal backgrounds of anybody who wishes to be a moderator, to make sure that there is no conflict of interest? Are we going to have to involve the FBI, have our own little spy system? I really think that this is a very dangerous thing that has happened. And I have been told that in order to overturn this, this particular situation before the next town, before the May town meeting, we might, the only way one could do that would be to have a referendum vote, because the town, I wanted to have the town meeting have a vote to reinstall Mr. Ward, but apparently, he's voted by the public, so the public has to make a determination on this. And I'm not sure if we want to do that, but I'd like to have you all think about this, because are we going to have to screen everybody for who they, who are they related to? Maybe their wife's second cousin has some, something to do with some, you know, this is, this could be a very miserable situation.
Thank you. We are on Article 6, and we, as I said, we want to finish. And the article itself appears on pages 61 and 62, and I'm not going to read it, and for those of you worried about reading, it is not required that you read it. And the main motion, as you understand, is the recommendation of the warrant committee, and that recommendation, which is before you as the motion, is that the town vote yes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation in substantially the form specified in this article, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. Mr. McCarthy, did you want to explain this briefly? And you are so recognized to do so. And then I'll recognize Mr. Walsh, and since nobody else is standing, I think we will go to the other.
Very briefly, as the warrant committee outlined in its original discussion, this is an article which would propose legislation modeled on an act passed for the town of Arlington in 1998, which would allow Milton to borrow money to pay for the school building project in advance of the cash flow requirements of that project, and then invest that money in short-term investment interests, all subject to the federal tax code. I just had one clarification, because I was asked a question by a town meeting member, and I was unable to answer it, but I'd like to answer it to the body now. We are showing the potential effect of arbitrage on pages 74 and 75 in the warrant. The total arbitrage earnings are estimated at $1.7 million, Mr. Mullen, at the rate of 5% anticipated. And the graph up top bears a moment of explanation as well. It is the suggestion of the warrant committee that we use such income to apply it against the liability that the taxpayer faces in the four most, or five, actually, most aggressive years of debt service. So, if you look at the line in the graph that appears to cut the top off the mountain, what we are suggesting is that the town's financial officials take the earnings and apply them toward the debt service in those five most difficult years, bringing every year of debt service under $600 for the median home. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ryan Walsh, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, I had a call from a resident precinct date who spent a considerable amount of time with me discussing some of the articles here, including this one, and they raised an interesting question that I'm hoping you could seek an answer to, and that essentially is, this article is clearly intended to structure an opportunity to use the monies that would be gained because of a successful passage by the residents of Article 4. If Article 4 were to fail in front of the residents, what would happen with this article?
There wouldn't be anything to invest. And so, it would not go into effect. Am I wrong on that? Charlie? That's the correct answer.
This is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court, so if the question on the ballot is successful and the voters choose to go forward with the school building plan, the selectmen would presumably make that petition. If it failed, they simply would not.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bye for the precincts. Eight residents for clearing that up.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? Who, John Flynn-
John Flynn's recognized, Town Council?
It's not that I just want to speak from the floor. It's just that, rather than the stage, it's just that a town meeting member asked me a question, a couple of questions the other night, and I didn't have the answers at the time, and I just wanted to share them with you in the event they're relevant to your consideration. His first question was, why do we need this legislation at all? The answer is primarily because, without this legislation, this money may have to go into the general fund. This legislation would clearly allow you to keep the money, and importantly, the interest earned in that money in a separate account to be set up under it. Special legislation is necessary for that, because without this legislation, current Massachusetts law would not allow you to do what the town would like to do with this article. The second question was, who could invest the money? The answer is, the treasurer could invest the money. The treasurer is the custodian of the fund, and the treasurer, under Massachusetts law, has statutory powers and limitations on what can be invested. Warrant Council felt, and I agree, that it wasn't necessary to set forth those issues in the legislation, that if this legislation passes, and if it's used by the town of Milton, the town treasurer's existing statutory authority and limitations would govern what investments could be made with this fund. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye. Those opposed, the recommendation of the warrant committee is passed. Article Seven, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation, which would provide that notwithstanding any general law or special law to the contrary, the town of Milton, through the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to lease to the Milton Public Schools for school purposes for a term not to exceed 99 years a portion of the town farm property off Uncody Road and Governor Stotan Lane, which town farm property is shown on town of Milton's Sessas Maps as Map K Block Six, Lot Two, and to act on anything relating there too. Recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote yes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation, which would provide that notwithstanding any general law or special law to the contrary, the town of Milton, through the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to lease to the public schools for school purposes for a term not to exceed 99 years a portion of the town farm property off Uncody Road and Governor Stotan Lane, which town farm property is shown on town of Milton's Sessas Maps as Map K Block Six, Lot Two. Does anyone wish to address the article? No one does? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye. Those opposed, the recommendation of the warrant committee is carried. Article Eight, to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate, which was received or is to be received from Carmouth of Massachusetts by an increase in Chapter Seventy State Aid to supplement the appropriation for the support of schools in fiscal year 2000, voted under Article Twenty-four of the 1999 Annual Town Meeting. And to act on anything relating there too, the recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $60,452 to supplement the appropriation for the support of the schools in fiscal year 2000, voted under Article Twenty-four of the 1999 Annual Town Meeting, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $60,452 be transferred from funds received or to be received from the Carmouth of Massachusetts in additional Chapter Seventy-eight. Mr. McCarthy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I know the hour is late, but I would not... Did not want to let this recommendation pass without extending our thanks to Milton's state legislators. The warrant committee is always grateful when additional money show up, and we understand that this was, in particular, a Senate initiative. And we'd like to thank our legislators for working hard to bring this money back to
Does anyone else wish to address the article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye. Those opposed, recommendation of the warrant committee is adopted. Article Nine is to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate to supplement the reserve fund appropriation, voted under Article Fifty of the 1999 Annual Town Meeting, for the transfer costs relating to employment security benefits for former employees in fiscal year 2000. The recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 to supplement the appropriation to the reserve fund in fiscal year 2000, voted under Article Fifty of the 1999 Annual Town Meeting, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $15,450 be transferred from fiscal year 1999 supplemental lottery receipts, and the remaining $34,550 be transferred from funds received or to be received from the Carmouth of Massachusetts in additional Chapter Seventy-eight. Does anyone wish to address the article? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye. Those opposed, the recommendation of the warrant committee is adopted. Now, briefly, some of you may or may not know, depending upon how closely you follow the every move of the moderator, but as part of my appointing process, I asked Mr. McCarthy specially to stay on. His unofficial time was up. I thought, in terms of this particular issue that was facing not only town meeting, but the town, that his expertise would be vital. And I believe that the chain of events and his energy and dedication and commitment and self-sacrifice to this process, and all of you understand, because we all have busy lives, he has a wife and family and kids and a business to run, but you can appreciate from what has been presented to you, that the warrant committee, under his guidance, enormously enhanced the project, in the sense that virtually every aspect of this major article dealing with our towns was reviewed by the warrant committee under his leadership. I also want to make sure that every member of the warrant committee understands that I thank each and every one of them personally. But this will be Charlie's last meeting, in that he will resign, because I asked him, and he only committed to work through this special town meeting. And Glenn Pavelcheck will take over as chairman of the warrant committee, and that's in accordance with the tradition, in terms of basic... Not that I don't vary from tradition on that. Take over as the warrant committee. I'm informed that Articles Ten and Eleven, which I had been announced that had been withdrawn, do require a no vote, in light of the fact that they are being withdrawn for the reasons that they are being withdrawn. So with respect to Article Ten, I assume the recommendation of the warrant committee is a no vote, and Mr. McCarthy so informs me. So in accordance with our established procedure, if you're voting with the warrant committee, you're voting no. So with respect to Article Ten, all those in favor of Article Ten, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Article Ten is defeated. Article Eleven is in the same posture. The recommendation of the warrant committee is that the town vote no. Essentially, it's been withdrawn for the reasons articulated, but we do need a vote. So all those in favor of Article Ten, which is contrary to the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye. Eleven, excuse me, let's get it right here, Ward. Article Eleven, we are on now. The recommendation of the warrant committee is no. And if you're voting with the warrant committee, you're voting no. All those in favor of Article Eleven, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Article Eleven is defeated. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.